Good evening, welcome to the June 18th, 2024 Gilbert Town Council Meeting. I'd first like to ask you to please turn off your cellphones or silence your cellphones and any other devices that you might have with you here in the chamber. I'd appreciate that, thank you very much. I will go ahead and call this meeting to order. Our first item of business this evening is an invocation by Next Steps Pastor Brent Humphrey of Sun Valley Community Church. Good evening Pastor. Nice to see you. Just push one of those buttons to turn the mic on and I always forget which button it is. The mic will go red when you're there, thank you.
There we go. Okay, please pray with me. Heavenly Father, we come before you today with grateful hearts, seeking your wisdom and guidance as we gather for this town council meeting. We thank you for the privilege to serve our community and for the responsibility you entrusted us with. Lord, we ask for your presence to be felt among us. Grant us the discernment and clarity to make decisions that will benefit our town and its residents. Help us to approach each issue with open minds and compassionate hearts, seeking the common good above all else. Give us the courage to stand for what is right and just, and the humility to listen to the voices of those we serve. May our discussions be filled with respect and understanding, and may our actions reflect your love and grace. We also lift up our town and its people to you. Bless our leaders, residents, and all those who work tirelessly for the betterment of our community. Provide for those in need, comfort those who are hurting, and bring peace to our town. As we begin this meeting, we ask for your blessing and guidance. May everything we do bring glory to your name and serve the people we are here to represent. In Jesus' name we pray, amen. Thank you.
Thank you so much Pastor, we appreciate your time this evening. Next, we will have our Pledge of Allegiance led by Councilmember Bon Giovanni, please rise.
I pledge allegiance to the flag.
United States of America.
Next, if I could ask our town clerk, Chevelli, to please offer the roll call.
Mayor Bridget Peterson.
Here.
Vice Mayor Scott Anderson.
Here.
Councilmember Chuck Bon Giovanni.
Here.
Councilmember Bobby Buckley.
Here.
Councilmember Young Kaprowski is absent. Councilmember Kathy Tilke.
Here.
And Councilmember Jim Torgerson.
Here.
A quorum is present.
Thank you so much, Chevelli. First on our agenda this evening is proclamations, I will come down to the floor. Thank you. Can I ask the, anyone with the Gilbert Leadership Board, Gilbert's Leadership Chamber of Commerce, Gilbert Leadership Chamber Foundation, and any members of Class 32 to please come on down and join me? Hi. Seems like I just saw you guys. Oh, Friday. Is Jenna, oh Jenna's here too. Yeah, Kristin, good. Assistant Chief. We are here to proclaim June as Gilbert Leadership Month, whereas the annual Gilbert Leadership Program is managed under the Gilbert Chamber Foundation and is designed to challenge, educate, and weave a class of diverse individuals representing the many fabrics of Gilbert. And whereas, class members take part in team building and community-centric learning days that expand their knowledge and leadership traits while also fostering lasting connections with a network of community leaders. And whereas, the Gilbert Leadership Program is organized and managed by a board made up of volunteers who plan impactful experiences that explore Gilbert's community from all angles, including its history, the government, education, economic development, public safety, health and wellness, and nonprofit organizations. And whereas, class members must conceive, plan, and implement a group project that benefits the community and is executed through the efforts of every member. And whereas, the current Gilbert Leadership Class, Class 32, spent a day preparing, painting, and rehabilitating a space for future use. Now therefore, I, Bridget Peterson, Mayor of the Town of Gilbert, do hereby proclaim June 2024 as Gilbert Leadership Month in Gilbert, Arizona, and extend the community's appreciation to the Gilbert Chamber Foundation and the 670-plus program graduates, many of whom have become leaders within our community and across our region and state. I encourage community members interested in the program to reach out to the Gilbert Chamber Foundation to learn more, and also make alumni aware that you can now reapply to participate in the program once again with Class 33's application open to all interested through July 5th, 2024. Congratulations. So there's my secret, she blew me up a bigger copy so I could read it without my glasses on. And here's the real proclamation, but I wanted to just say Class 32 actually graduated on Friday night. I think this is the first time I've had a class in that had already graduated to proclaim the month of June as national, as Gilbert Leadership Month. But the program has changed, oh, there's our picture, you guys, there we are, from your graduation. This program has changed so many people's lives over the years, and I want to give a shout out to Councilmember Tilke, who actually created the program when she was the Director of the Chamber of Commerce and she was in Class 1. Now, I said this was Class 32, there is only one class a year, so this has been going on for 32 years. And I was a member of Class 8, and they heard my joke I went through when I was 10. But I would like to give everybody just a moment to tell me who you are, if you remember the class, the board, the foundation, and you have to name what class number you are in. And I know you guys are 32, but.
Richard Morris, Class 32.
Janice Adams, also with Class 32.
Jim Bezegli, Class 32.
Tony Rodardi, Class 32.
Errol Turner, Class 32.
EJ Abiyomi, Class 32.
Elizabeth Freer, Class 32.
Jen Ignacio, Class 32.
Erica Callahan, Class 32.
Jen Rosenhardt, Class 32.
Jenna Call, outgoing Board Chair, Class 27.
Sarah Watts, the Class Liaison, and Class 21.
Deb Carr, I'm the past Chair on the Board, Class 25.
Dan Henderson, Class 32.
Kristin Drew, Class 26 and incoming Chair.
Bridget Peterson, Class 8, former Chair of the Board, also spent seven years on the Board of Directors with Gilbert Leadership Program. I would love to just have anybody else that's in the audience that went through Gilbert Leadership, if you could please raise your hand, because I know there's people here. Thank you, I see people back there. Here, we'll take a photo. Next, we'll move into our public hearing items for the evening.
Madam Mayor.
Yes.
I have two points of order.
Yes.
First one, due to true parent, true transparency with Councilmember Tilke not being here, I would like to motion to.
Excuse me, Councilmember Tilke's here.
I'm sorry, Councilmember Kaprowski, not here, I would like to move Item 39 to our August 6th meeting, so the full council can be here to discuss this.
Absolutely.
That's a motion.
Second it.
I have a motion and a second, to move Item 39 to a date certain, or August 6th or August 18th, I'm sorry, missed time. August 6th meeting? Can we, can we please vote? Motion passes 5-1.
I have another point of order also, please. I have a motion for to remove Item 31 to the August 6th meeting and move it to the public hearing section. We have a lot of people that do want to talk about the garage issue, and I'd rather have them discuss it before we just vote on it and then hear from them afterwards.
I second that.
So we have a motion to move Item 31 from the consent agenda to the public hearing portion of the agenda for the August 6th meeting, is that what I heard?
Correct.
I have a motion and a second. Please vote. Motion passes 6-0. So staff, did you catch that? Item 31 contract would move to public hearing. Anyone that's here to speak on Item 39 during the public hearing, I will still allow you to speak on it, that's what we've always done in the past, because we just decided to make this change to move that to the next meeting, so I will always allow the public comment. We have under public hearing, items will be heard at one public hearing, at which time anyone wishing to comment on a public hearing item may do so. Comments will be heard from those in support of or in opposition to an item. I have Items 2. Yes.
Point of order, since the whole thing is about transparency, I believe that having a full council for that conversation is more important than to expend that time now, when there won't be a vote or a motion on it this evening. So I would like that not to be part of the upcoming language, of the meeting.
If that's a motion, I'll second it.
I'm making a motion to do that.
Can I please stop and check with our clerk and our town attorney, because I've never seen this happen historically in Gilbert, ever. The public has come out to speak on an issue, they are here tonight, they should be given the right to speak on the issue that they came up believing was going to be part of the agenda. But I don't know if there's legal or.
So Mayor, Council, we're just conferring, just to be sure. So what the council can do, they can't have a vote, it would take a super majority to not allow the comment, because you're kind of subverting the rules, you have the authority to do so, and it sounds like there was a motion and a second, so you can have the vote on that, to not allow public comment. At this hearing, you would do it at the, when it's next heard, on August 6th.
So the motion is to deny the public comment for this meeting, and we would have to have a super majority, which would be how many people, Chris?
It would be.
There's only six of us here.
It'd be five of six.
You'd have to have five of six say.
Say.
No, in order for it to be heard tonight, and yes, for it to be heard at the next meeting?
The motion is to not accept public comment tonight, instead have it on August 6th.
Right.
So if that motion passes, at least five council members, then there's no public comment tonight on that item.
I'm just trying to be clear of which way people need to vote, so that they know, because we have a negative to not have the, the public discussion tonight, or to not allow the public comment tonight. So would you vote yes, no, I don't want to have the public comment tonight? I'm trying to be clear.
That, that's correct.
Okay.
Yes vote means there's no public comment tonight, it will be on the 6th. And a no vote would say there's public comment tonight, and it would happen again on the 6th as well.
Could we have a discussion on that real quick?
Sure.
I just feel that Councilmember Kaprowski should be here during that discussion and should hear from the community also on that, on that discussion.
Councilmember Buckley, did you have something that you wanted to add?
Oh, I'm sorry, no, no, I do not.
Councilmember Torgerson?
No, I just feel that since Young was so adamant about the presentation we had at that study session, which unfortunately she wasn't here for, I want her to be part of the entirety of the discussion. And I just think it's very important, if we're going to be transparent, that she is part of the entirety of the discussion.
Understood. I did just want to point out that when we voted to move this to this evening's agenda, Councilmember Kaprowski knew she wouldn't be in town, and we knew she wouldn't be in town, so it got moved, fully knowing that she would not be here and present for this discussion and/or vote. I want to.
I had no idea she wouldn't be here.
It was on, sorry, it was on my calendar, I was, I would assume that everybody knew that she wasn't going to be here, but she knew she wasn't going to be here.
Well, I knew she was going to be out of town, but I didn't know she wasn't going to call in, and either way, she should needs, we need to hear from her, and she needs to hear from the citizens also, I believe.
So we have a motion and a second to.
Delay it to August 6th.
Delay the public comment to the August 6th meeting.
Correct.
So if you vote yes, that's to delay it, if you vote no, it's to not delay it. Vote passes 5-1. The public comment for Item 39 will now move to the August 6th meeting. I apologize to the public that came out to speak this evening, I've never in 24 years seen this happen from this dais. So please come back and speak on this item in August.
Mayor, this wasn't a negative thing, this was for transparency, so to say that, to come out and say that makes it sound like a bad thing, this is a good thing, what we just decided to do, so we can hear from.
I'm the one who's receiving the nasty emails about stopping public comments, so I want to point out that I am opposed to not allowing the public to speak that are here this evening. If they took their time to come out this evening, I believe they should be allowed to speak, and that is what I have seen historically for 24 years. And that's all I was saying, I do not think it's fair to the people that have taken time out of their evening to be here to speak on this issue. Maybe they aren't available August 6th, and so now they won't have an opportunity to come back and speak at that point in time. I just wanted to point that out. Moving on, we have, back to our public hearing agenda, we have two liquor licenses, we have two items that are asking to be continued to August 6th for the regular council meeting. We have a budget, Code of Gilbert, an Agreement 10A. Are there specific items that you would want to, and I left redevelopment area off specifically, because I know that will be a public hearing, are there other items out of the ones that I listed that you would prefer to have a public hearing discussion on, or any staff presentation on? Opening the public hearing.
Number seven, I would like to have a discussion on.
Okay, number seven?
As far as on.
So.
Mayor. I'm sorry, number seven, staff presentation and discussion, just so I'm clear.
You know what, no, I think just a quick discussion, I.
Your mic's not on.
Want to ask some questions for number seven?
Okay, we're prepared.
Thank you. Number nine will be pulled separately, it has to be a public hearing.
Okay. Mayor.
Yes, sorry.
Number 10.
Number 10, okay. 10, not 10A, 10?
10.
Okay, I'm going to pull 10A, because I just want to make a comment about that. Okay, so I will close the public hearing, what I'm hearing is, I would take a motion to approve 2, 3, 4, 5, 8, and that's it.
I, I make a motion to approve 2, 3, 4, 5, and 8.
I think you got them all, I said 2, 3, 4, 5, and 8.
I'll second that.
I have a motion and a second. Please vote. Motion passes 6-0, so anybody here that was here for Items 2, 3, 4, 5, or 8, they have passed, or and are moving forward to the next meeting agenda as they were listed on our agenda this evening. Moving on to, going back to item number, okay, now I have to cross these off, so I know what we've already discussed. Going back to item number nine would be our next item, I will open the public hearing.
Mayor Peterson?
Yes.
I'm sorry, part of that motion was not to continue Item 6, can we get clarification on that?
We wish to.
No, I think we said.
I wanted to continue Item 6, I thought it had already been done in the agenda, is continue Item 6. Item 7, I wanted some discussion upon.
Right.
Okay.
I have a circle on 7. I thought 6 was part of what I said.
No.
2, 3, 4, 5, 6 and 8, or just 8, did I just say 8?
I think you skipped 8 and just.
Okay, we need, open the public hearing, close the public hearing, we need a motion on number 6.
I'll make a motion to continue to August 6th.
Thank you.
I'll second that.
We have a motion and a second, please vote. Okay, take 2, that passes 6-0. Anyone that was here for 2, 3, 4, 5, 6, or 8, they have now been moved to August 6th or have passed on the agenda this evening. Take 2. Next, we have item number 7, that would be, open the public hearing for item number 7, if staff could please come to the podium for, I don't think we need a full staff presentation, but I think we have questions.
I'd like a little presentation.
Oh, you would like a presentation?
Yeah.
A smidge.
Jenica, do you have a presentation prepared? A Reader's Digest version, oh, you're too young for Reader's Digest. I have to stop using that reference. What are we going to call it, a social media version, because it's short, to the point? Oh, but that'd be fake.
A TikTok.
If it's on social media. Thank you, Jenica, turn your mic on, please, don't, thank you.
Would you like me to address questions first, or would you like me to go through a presentation, Mayor and Council?
I'd like just a little bit of a presentation, I, there were some questions I had that I couldn't. There were some questions I had that I couldn't find answers anywhere.
No problem. So over the last few months, we have been going through a process to develop electric vehicle charging fees. That process has included a study conducted by Walker Consultants. And then we discussed the findings of that study during the March 5th study session. During that study session, we discussed some proposed fees, a 25 cent per kilowatt hour to charge for the first four hours, 70 cents per kilowatt to charge after four hours, and then $5 per hour as an idle fee, and then a $175 fine should someone be parked in a spot that's not actively charging or park their non-electric vehicle in one of those spots. The intent of those fees were to only recoup the cost of electricity dispensed by the charging stations and not designed to include the cost of infrastructure. Those proposed fees align with the current market, whether that's another municipality or even some of the private providers in the area as well. With that, and based off of assumed usage, since we do not have any data being collected from our current charging stations, Walker Consultants has estimated an approximate revenue of about $6,500 a year at our three current locations. But based off the feedback and some of the questions we received during that study session, we did have our consultant go back and do a draft break-even analysis to see what that would look like if we were to include the cost of infrastructure in that calculation. And what they found is that an annual average cost would be about $40,000. That takes into account the current estimated cost of replacement at our three locations. That also takes into consideration the cost of the site work and the preparation included in that project. So with that $40,000 annually, that break-even analysis determined a fee of almost 83 cents to be required to, would be required to recoup the cost of infrastructure along with the cost of electricity. That analysis also assumes that we'd have the same demand, that we'd have the same amount of, of consumers, residents, the community wanting to use our chargers at that 83 cents that would at eight, at the 25 cent rate, which we believe is unlikely. That fee would be more than double what is in the surrounding areas, and then charging at home is even less than that rate. To put it in a little bit of perspective, if you were to go 250 miles on a non-electric vehicle and 250 miles on an electric vehicle, the charge would be three times more than the price of gas at that rate. And now just to give some, some context to that comparison, we did look at Chandler, Mesa, Tempe, Scottsdale, Glendale, ASU, as well as the state of Arizona offices in Phoenix. Currently, with that break-even analysis showing quite the increase in fee, we are recommending that we continue with the proposed rates, with the 25 cents, with the intent to recoup electricity costs only, to better align with the market. And that implementation will begin here at Town Hall first, and at the two additional locations as those replacement projects complete. One of the, one of the biggest items I look forward to bringing back to you is a pilot program. That pilot program will provide us the data that we will need to continue examining this cost as well as making decisions in the future. And just some further context on the other two locations, with Town Hall being ready to implement, the projects currently under replacement for Hernway Parking Garage and the Public Safety Training Facility, we're anticipating an April of '25 date for those to turn, to be turned on with that fee. And then in that process, that brings us to, we concluded the study session, have provided the feedback from our consultant. On April 8th, the notice of intent that you directed us to post was posted, which puts the timeline at August 1st, potential implementation of that fee. So those next steps in that process, should Council choose to implement the fee, that fee will become effective August 1st, and then a one-year pilot program was requested, so we can continue to gather and analyze that data for future needs. That's all the presentation I have today. If there's any questions, I'm happy to answer them.
Thank you, Jenica. Any questions for Jenica? Councilmember Torgerson?
And forgive me, because I've been having misgivings about this since it was first presented. But it's going to cost the town, the taxpayers, $40,000 a year to upkeep and implement this. And I, I have a problem with it, because it's an incentive not to install, to, to be self-sufficient on your own vehicle. It costs X amount of dollars to put a charger in your home. To me, to only make $6,500 after the cost of electricity and lose $40,000, I, I just really, I really want to see it break even. And I know that I'm probably very much in the minority on that, and I'm not trying to pearl-harp you with this, but is there some way we can get to, to a break-even point? Because otherwise, what's the incentive for somebody that has an electric car to put their own charger? And if they can just hop on down to the, the garage and plug it in for 25 cents a kilowatt hour? So that's my struggle. I mean, can we get to a point of recoupment?
Councilmember Torgerson, I think it's a great question, but unfortunately, with charging stations being a practice that we've employed for many years, we just currently do not have the data. So with this project to replace those, we have the ability, excuse me, we have the ability to gather that data for you, and we can look at these, the pricing structure with actual usage data from our, from our locations. Right now, our consultant has nothing to go off of, other than use in the area, data on how many electric vehicles are in Gilbert and in the surrounding areas. Unfortunately, with the way our current chargers are set up, we have no way to know actual usage data. And so I look forward to the opportunity to bring that back to you. And that may adjust where that break-even analysis is. And thankfully for us, with the three locations, we have very different users at all three, is what we're assuming, with their, the three varying locations. And so I, I think once we have some data, we may, we may be able to adjust that. But I wouldn't be able to give you an answer until we have the data collected.
Councilmember Bonjiani?
Thank you. I'm not going to put you in a spot.
That's okay.
But it is, but, and I apologize for not asking this during the study session. It just, it wasn't clicking when I was sitting here, we were talking about that. So how many actual stations do we have right now? And how, like, how many different cars can park and charge?
So each station serves two vehicles. And I could be wrong, I will go back and verify for you, but I believe we have 21 stations currently. And that's publicly available, as well as we have six behind the secured area at the Public Safety Training Facility as well.
Okay. So, and we're going to lose 40 minute, well, 40 was at the highest rate. So 20, it was 29, I think it was, at the current rate, minus 65. So we're going to lose about $21,000 by, by installing the, the charger, the charging, the charge, right? Okay. And we want to add, how many in the future?
Currently, there are the chargers installed here at Town Hall already.
Right.
There is a project underway at the moment that, that will replace the ones at Public Safety Training Facility, as well as at the Hernway Parking Garage. In the future, we have not quite decided where or how many we will have in the future. But I believe that will be upcoming.
So it would approximately take four years to really break even from 6,500 profit after we pay for the electricity and costing $29,000.
With our current estimates and this initial assumed data, that is what we're showing. However, our actual usage may, may find something else.
Sure. And this isn't replacement cost either.
That is the current replacement rate, to replace our current chargers.
Got you, but that's not where I'm going. I'm going, so how, how long do these things last?
Right now, we're anticipating a 10-year useful life.
Okay, and we'd have to buy all new ones in 10 years. Unless they change the technology in two years, we have to buy all new ones in two years.
Potentially.
Okay, just checking, just checking. And, and I'm asking this because I don't know. So has anyone approached any kind of private-public partnership for this? Would Tesla lease the parking spaces from us?
I would have to go back and, or call a, call a friend to give you that information, but I, I would not have that answer at the moment.
Okay. I mean, I'm all for electric and all that kind of stuff, but to me, it seems like we're, we're subsidizing people that have electric cars, in many ways. You know what I mean? And I, I know we don't have all the answers with this technology, and, and I was even, I remember I asked during the study session, do they have solar panels that can give us electricity for somewhat free? But that's all the questions I have. I appreciate you sticking up there and being under pressure.
No problem, thank you.
Councilmember Buckley?
I just have a quick question. If I remember correctly, you mentioned something about how many electric vehicles are in Gilbert. Do you, do you know that number? Have, have you guys, I, I can't recall if you said you had it or if you didn't.
Our consultants did use that figure, and I could certainly find out and provide that to you at a later date.
Yeah, I, I would like to have that, I would like to get that information if possible.
I, are you asking for approximate residents that have electric vehicles? Or approximate how many we have within the town fleet? I'm just trying to be clear.
Well, I think, I think I asked for how many electric cars are in Gilbert. So that would include Gilbert, the entire town, whether it's on our fleet, it's parked in someone's garage, or wherever. How many electric cars are actually in Gilbert?
And Councilmember Buckley, I will certainly gather that data and provide that to you at a later date.
Yeah, thank you, thank you, I appreciate that. In response to some of the items Councilmember Bonjiani was speaking of in regards to the price, and that maybe we're not making enough money on that, has, have you done some analysis in regards to having a, a higher increase so that we break even? Instead of, I mean, 25, instead of 25 cents, we need to less double that and charge them 50 cents? I'm sure you've done some different calculations, but that's just a thought.
Councilmember Buckley, we actually have done that break-even analysis based off of the feedback we received at the council study session. And what that shows is, we would need to charge almost 83 cents, which puts us much higher than the market. And it also puts us at a rate that's three times higher than fueling a, a non-electric vehicle. So unfortunately, we do not believe that that, that that would, would bear well in our community. And I think it would decrease our, our usage as well.
Well, I would just like to say 83 cents is, you know, if that's per hour or whatever, sure beats the heck out of 4.79 a gallon for gas.
And I, I understand with new technology and with this being a newer topic, certainly something I was confused about initially, and our, our consultant was wonderful at trying to explain. If we were to have a non-electric vehicle get about 250 miles and compare that to an electric vehicle that would get about 250 miles, that's where they came up with the calculation, that it would cost three times more to fill the electric vehicle than it would the non-electric vehicle.
Yeah, well, I, I guess you could look at that when you get about 24 miles a gallon of gas, but, but thank you, you're, you're being very patient and very professional, and, and I appreciate your answers.
Thank you. Councilmember Tilke?
Thank you, Mayor. Hi, Jenica. If I'm remembering from our study session, we currently don't charge for using our stations. And this project that we were going to be gathering data over the next year is going to be able to give us a lot more information. But we would be then charging the public to use those that were in, like, our garages and things like that. But this also allows us to track our own fleet, and those departments would be charged for that. So this is a different model than in the past. I appreciate the comments about breaking even, and I just want to make sure I heard correctly. It appears that within four years, or, how many years? Four years out of a 10-year life, we would break even. We would have the rate that was reasonable, comparable to the other communities. As a person who gets to go to the gas station, it is hard for me to equate the two, because when you're looking dollar to dollar, it doesn't make sense. But I think it's, it's a little different model, and so I think that's a little hard to get arms around. But if I understood right, this was going to be not a pilot program, but it, it is in a sense of gathering the data so that we have more information in the future. Is that correct?
Yes.
Thank you.
Well said, and your memory's better than mine tonight. Councilmember Bonjiani?
Thanks for clearing that up, Councilmember Tilke. So that brings another question to me. What are we in the hole now? Do we know?
I'm sorry?
If we're not charging, what are we in the hole now?
We haven't been tracking it in any way? So how would, are you meaning by...
Well, if we're not charging for it now, and people are plugging in, how much are we losing now?
Do we have that number, Jenica? How much electricity is being used at those chargers currently?
Thank you for speaking in your shawty.
Is that right?
Yeah, that's it, yeah.
I had, it took me a second.
Trying to have a game show. Oh, 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 oh.
Yeah, I was going to say, can we just take a recess, please? Thank you, we'll take a recess. recess. Going to go ahead and call this meeting back to order. Wishing Jenica the best as she moves forward. I'm going to bring the discussion back to the council, to the dais, and see what the council would like to do at this point. I entertain a motion if you would like to. On this item.
Mayor?
Yes, Councilmember Tilke?
I'll make a motion to approve item.
Seven.
Seven. Thank you. I've got so many notes here. Item seven regarding the fees for electric vehicle charging fees, with the understanding that we are going to be receiving data throughout the next year on that. Thank you.
Second.
I have a motion by Councilmember Tilke, seconded by Vice Mayor. Please vote. Motion passes four to two with Councilmembers Torgerson and Bon Giovanni as the two against. Moving to item nine, if I'm doing my page right. Item nine, and I will invite Economic Development staff to the podium to present, open the public hearing, to present the discussion on the redevelopment area, consider adoption of Resolution Number 4487 approving Northwest Gilbert redevelopment area boundary pursuant to the requirements of ARS 361473, that a redevelopment area exists in the municipality and declaring the necessity of redevelopment and authorize the mayor to execute the required documents. We are holding our public hearing tonight that is required under Arizona Revise Statutes. In order to do so, and I will open it up to you, Dan Henderson.
Wonderful. Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, members of the council. Good evening. We appreciate the opportunity to present the findings of the Northwest Gilbert redevelopment area as required by Arizona Revise Statutes. As you know, aging areas within a community can enhance character, authenticity, and pride of place. They can also, when left unchecked, have negative consequences such as neglect, business and residential neighbor flight, deterioration leading to poor health, certainly safety conditions, or aesthetically unattractive areas. The Northwest part of Gilbert is the most mature area in the Gilbert community and has been examined for more than a decade. Through this examination, we've determined that a community-driven focus on the area is necessary for early intervention. In fact, in 2012, we began conducting business outreach in the area, and public feedback signaled that Northwest was reaching maturity. At the time, Gilbert Town Council instructed staff to begin monitoring data in relation to Northwest Gilbert. Over the past 10-plus years, staff has continued to monitor data trends, interface with the community, engage industry experts, and determine the optimal time for reinvestment and redevelopment efforts. Based on the data and the outreach, the time to begin revitalization efforts through redevelopment, reinvestment, and revitalization is now. Per Arizona Revise Statutes, boundary adoption by the town council is the first step in establishing a redevelopment area. Once the area is adopted, the development of goals and strategies will follow via the creation of a community-driven redevelopment plan that will be brought back to council for consideration and possible adoption. So we've taken a moment here and asked ourselves the question, why redevelopment? We endeavor to create the place where the market wants to invest, and by instituting redevelopment today, together, we can develop a community toolbox for revitalization in the Northwest area so that Gilbert can continue to be a vibrant place to live, work, develop, and play long into the future. Mayor and council, we are so humbled by the interactions that we've had with members of the community throughout this process, the business community, our community partners, stakeholders, and all who have been providing feedback, ideas, and guidance since as far back as 2012. With this brief overview, Mayor and council, I'd like to hand the presentation over to Amanda Elliott, Redevelopment Manager for Gilbert.
Thanks, Dan. I get the fun part of giving you guys the presentation on the findings. So if you just will give me a minute here.
Take your time. Get yourself set up, Amanda. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, thank you, Mayor, members of council. It is great to be before you this evening. Tonight, staff is recommending a motion to approve Resolution Number 4487, finding pursuant to the requirements of the ARS 361473, that a redevelopment area exists in the municipality and declaring the necessity of redevelopment. Across the United States, there are many examples of the rise and fall of great American cities, cities who focused on new areas, neglecting aging portions of their community. Gilbert, on the other hand, has made a long-term commitment to breaking the cycle of decline. And there are many terms used for breaking the cycle: redevelopment, revitalization, and reinvestment. But what does that actually mean? The easiest way to understand this effort is to liken it to homeownership. Homes need ongoing maintenance to ensure that they do not become in a state of disrepair. This Northwest Gilbert effort uses data and public feedback to determine where and how Gilbert should focus its reinvestment efforts in the most mature portion of the community. Another way to look at reinvestment, sorry, there's my icons there, is to consider home renovations. So you may find over time that you want to update your kitchen or bathroom. We can think of this in relation to Northwest in ideas like updating streetscapes, infrastructure improvements, or even enhanced park amenities. The American Planning Association, which is the leading organization in the United States for community planning, defines redevelopment as a process or tool that addresses environmental, economic, social, and physical conditions. So why now? As you'll see, data and outreach completed over the last 10-plus years suggests that the time is right now to reinvest in the community. In a portion where the community is largely 30-plus years old, the area is vitally important to the community as it holds over 37% of the jobs in Gilbert, particularly those related to science, technology, engineering, and math occupations. We know that this area has a significant number of homeowners who have invested in their homes since they were built, and we want to ensure that this area remains a vibrant place to live, work, and play, and that the investments that our residents have made and our business owners have made in the community continue to remain strong. In 2014, business and public outreach signaled that Gilbert was reaching its maturity. And at that time, council instructed staff to begin monitoring data in relation to Northwest Gilbert. So you can see here, we've had some starts and stops over the last 10 years, but we've continually monitored data, we've interfaced with the public, and we brought industry experts like the Urban Land Institute to determine the optimal time for reinvestment and redevelopment effort. We've had, like other redevelopment efforts, we've undergone an extensive public outreach effort, including development of a website landing page, multiple townwide surveys with nearly 1,000 responses each, focus on Northwest Gilbert, two business walks in conjunction with the Gilbert Chamber, we've done roundtables and dialogues with the Public Policy Committee, we've done virtual public open houses with nearly 175 attendees, two public meetings in the last two months, the last one that had over 250 attendees, and we've promoted open office hours for dialogue with staff. And I'm very grateful for the individuals who have reached out and sought additional information on this effort. Just to show you, this is the website landing page, gilbertaz.gov/nwgilbert. On this page, we have links to some FAQs, and every single public meeting that has been recorded is available on this website. Most recently, we put out a survey post the study session. As you know, study session is an opportunity for council to dialogue with one another. We were asking you about the boundary we should proceed with. Post that study session, we proceeded with a survey, asking the public, do you agree with the direction that council has given us? We had three responses. Two said yes, one said they preferred the connect boundary. We also had an interactive map where individuals could pin specific redevelopment or revitalization opportunities they wanted to report, and the interactive map will remain on the webpage as we continue through this process if council gives us the direction to do so. Two committees were formed to help brainstorm, review vet practices, vet ideas, and provide direction regarding Northwest revitalization and redevelopment. The first committee is a technical committee, so that's comprised of an individual of every single department across the town. The second committee is a steering committee comprised of business owners, residents, developers, architects, contractors, land use attorneys, educational partners, community leaders, and town staff. So let's get into the statute. In the 1970s, the state of Arizona instituted a toolbox of tools for municipalities that they could use in a designated redevelopment area. These tools are meant to aid in the prevention of or elimination of signs of decline. The statute allows access to this toolbox for a matter of 10 years, so long as the community has a community-driven plan in place for reinvestment. So let's talk about where we are in the process. This is essentially the process for designating a redevelopment area. This is the required process. We are currently in this phase here. So we've met with the public, we have been monitoring data, we've asked about the boundary, we've sought your feedback, and now we're here to seek your adoption potentially. If you are to adopt tonight, we go back out to the public to start building goals and strategies for this area. We then craft a plan, and it comes back to you all for adoption. So one other way to put this, just to hammer this home, do we agree that this area needs reinvestment? If yes, this is the part where we're defining where investment and reinvestment should occur. And then the next step is that community-developed plan with goals, strategies, tools, and prioritizations that goes back to you for adoption. As you may remember, Mayor and council, we had three potential boundary options, and we brought this forth to the public for their feedback and input and monitored the data. And where we landed, based on the feedback from the public, the data, and your feedback, is on this boundary that is bounded at Arizona Avenue on the east and Lindsay Road on the west, excuse me, baseline at the north and railroad at the south. It's approximately 18% of the total land planning area of Gilbert, which is 72 square miles, and this area is 12.99 square miles. Mayor, you had asked about homes that face Lindsay Road that are on the east side, and after conferring again with our committee of individuals, including planning, we are suggesting that we do not include those homes as they're part of a larger master plan community, and therefore it would change the boundary substantially as we really kind of wanted a very easily definable boundary that followed the data.
Thank you for looking into that.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. So as per the revised statutes, it states that a municipality must notify the property owner that within the boundaries of a proposed redevelopment area, the time, date, and location of a public meeting concerning findings. We actually did two public mailers. The first we mailed out in March 27th. Again, we had over 250 attendees at that particular meeting. And then, of course, we have the mailer for this meeting that was sent out. So as we look at the data for Northwest, let's focus on this boundary. Please note that the Heritage District is not included in this boundary as it is its own statutory redevelopment area that was adopted in 1989. own statutory redevelopment area that was adopted in 1989. As part of the designation process, the town must provide data that signifies the need for redevelopment and access to the redevelopment tool. The state outlines nine findings of necessity, which the municipality must demonstrate it has a combination of. So the state doesn't indicate that you have to have all findings present. So if you remember, this is both for elimination of and prevention of maturing signs of decline, and as such, Gilbert has identified six areas that apply to Northwest Gilbert. They're in the checkboxes here. Apologies for not mentioning that. So the first factor, one factor that's prevalent in Northwest is faulty and inadequate street layout. This is not due to poor planning efforts, but the reality is a need of an area transitions over time as the uses transition. And so in this particular area within the industrial portion of this boundary, Northwest has seen buildings that have transitioned from manufacturing and warehousing and distribution to office use, or other uses that have created a need for on-street parking. So now you have this competing priority between those who need to park on the street and those who the larger trucks that need to move goods in and out of the warehouses or manufacturing facilities. So of course, this is one of those areas where if we were to establish a redevelopment boundary, we would be able to look at goals and strategies to solve for this. As we further examine the area and possibility for revitalization, we note that the Northwest growth area, so this is mainly that contiguous area of employment that is in the voter-approved general plan, that 36% of the properties in these areas do not have access via a public road. As we move on with dominance of defective or inadequate street layout, this area has some of the highest vehicle volume streets accommodating over 35,000 vehicles per day. This is certainly a key area that we have heard from the community of their concern that there is a tremendous amount of traffic. And so again, we would work cohesively with all our departments and the public to look at opportunities to solve for this. As we look at faulty lot layout, faulty lot layout refers to lots that are challenged to develop to current standards. And so, oops, pardon me. Gilbert has 348 total vacant parcels under two acres. So if you imagine a two-acre parcel that has to fit parking, it has to fit stormwater detention on its site, it has to fit its outdoor open space. Those are really challenging to develop for these for these property owners, and 67 of them are located within the proposed Northwest boundary. So that equates to nearly 20% of vacant parcels under two acres in Gilbert located within the boundary. As we look at the factor unsanitary or unsafe conditions and deterioration of site or other improvements, this is largely related to neglect issues. So those neglect factors include things like trash and debris, outdoor storage, dead vegetation, peeling paint, parking on unimproved surfaces, abandoned vehicles, deteriorating fencing, broken windows, and aluminum foil. In the Northwest boundary, there are approximately 65 code compliance calls per 1,000 residents in the last five years. And to visualize these calls, we created a heat map. The heat map demonstrates where those calls are clustered, and as you can see, the proposed boundary encompasses some of the larger clusters where we've received calls in relation to these conditions or neglect factors. Conditions that endanger life or property include properties that contain, conditions that pose threats by fire, contamination, or other causes can include vacant buildings, excessive junk, blocked entrances. These are all still largely related to those compliance issues that we can solve for. But in addition to that, we also examined police calls for per service per capita. This area does have a higher police call for service per capita at .76 calls per person compared to Gilbert as a whole at .68 calls per person. And then we also look at defective or unusual conditions of title. And so in pulling information from the Maricopa County Assessor's Office, foreclosure histories are noted under that defective or unusual conditions of title. There are approximately 20,000 parcels in Gilbert that have a foreclosure history. Approximately 2,800 of those parcels are located within the proposed boundary. So this equates to nearly a quarter of the properties with a foreclosure history located in the proposed boundary. But as previously noted, the Arizona Revised Statute for Redevelopment was established in the 1970s around the time when urban renewal programs were largely focused on slum and blight removal. As such, the factors that are outlined in the statute demonstrate the need for redevelopment primarily focused on the built environment. But redevelopment as a practice for ensuring that mature areas of community remain vibrant has evolved. It's evolved so much so that the American Planning Association notes that recognizing circumstances that lead to decline requires a more comprehensive set of remedies than simply changing the existing physical environment and conditions. So as such, staff has examined economic and socioeconomic characteristics that align with signs of maturation, and these factors signal potential need for specific or specialized goals and strategies to help people in our community reinvest in their property. So we did a quick economic analysis. Retail vacancy is trending at 3% on par with the rest of the community. No surprise here because we have such substantial and great industrial in this area. It's actually faring better than the community with only a 1% vacancy whereby the rest of the community is at about 5% vacancy in industrial. And then another no big surprise here, this area is faring worse than the rest of the community in relation to office. Again, we talked about those uses that have transitioned, where building may have been industrial, transitioned to office, and then COVID hit, and now some of those buildings are sitting vacant because they have a lease on them. So we're not overly surprised by this, but we are very curious what will happen with the future of office and want to keep an eye out on this trend. We were thrilled to see that McQueen District Park and Activity Center is one of the top five visited parks in Gilbert. And when we met with the community, there was a resounding conversation about how much people love their parks and want to continue to see us reinvest in our parks, and we know that there is a comprehensive parks master plan underway right now. We looked at parcels built by year. So this helps us understand the condition of parcels. So in Gilbert, there are more than 8,600 properties that were built before 1990, and as much as I loathe to admit it, that's 30 years old. Nearly 60% of those properties are located within this boundary option. And so then we compare that to our emergency home repair program. So this program allows individuals who are income-eligible to have assistance with minor home repairs. And as you can see in this map, this is another heat map, the heat map really correlates with the age of those properties. And then you can see there's some cold spots. So these are areas where we're not receiving any calls for service or assistance. We compared HOA and non-HOA neighborhoods in order to understand what the different needs are between the neighborhoods. For example, we heard from those in non-HOA neighborhoods that assistance with exterior repairs and landscaping may be helpful, while those in HOA neighborhoods suggested that, you know, grants to help repair exterior block wall fences in their neighborhoods or monument signage could be helpful in offsetting some of those costs to the neighborhood. We also look at the population, and the purpose of identifying shrinking populations isn't to suggest that we need to attract more individuals to an area. Again, the area is already largely built out. It's really to help us understand the shifting or changing demographics. So for example, 82% of this boundary, so areas in here are actually expected to have a shrinking population. And so one of these factors may simply be that children are growing and leaving home. But this type of information, if that is the case, then helps us work with our schools in Northwest who've already been at the table throughout the process. So again, this data is really just to help us inform us as we move into goal creation. There are nearly 30,000 individuals, 65 and older, in the Gilbert community. Almost 7,000 of them reside in the proposed Northwest boundary, so that equates to nearly a quarter of those, 65 plus on a fixed income, in less than a quarter of the town's planning area. There are nearly 40,000 households that apply more than 50, 4,000, excuse me, let me clarify that, approximately 4,000 households that apply 50% of their income to housing costs. And so that's nearly a quarter of those households that reside within this proposed boundary. The Department of Housing and Urban Development notes that as a best practice, no more than 30% of income should be applied to housing. Of the nearly 5,000 households in Gilbert that live below the property level, a quarter of those households or 1,200 households reside in the proposed boundary. Again, this data isn't is simply to inform so that staff can monitor these trends and work with the community to determine if there are specific goals that may assist those who want to reinvest in their property, but may be on a more fixed income. And then finally, of the nearly 16,000 households in Gilbert with disabilities, nearly 4,000 of those or a quarter of those households are in the Northwest proposed boundary. Strategies to assist revitalization may be things like mapping and replacing older sidewalks that no longer meet ADA standards, as an example. So we also wanted to chat through, these are, we have an FAQ section on our website landing page, but these are some more, let's say, recent FAQs that we've been receiving over the last couple of weeks. I want to address all of those. So as we noted, the Arizona Revised Statute for Redevelopment was created in the 1970s, so during the time where urban renewal programs were largely focused on slum and blight removal. The statute hasn't been modified since its creation to address the substantial changes over time in the practice of redevelopment. So we have questions, we've received questions about why does this particular redevelopment area have an association with slum and blight? And so that addresses the why, but what's interesting is the American Planning Association acknowledges that the term "blight," when it was established, really referred to grotesque living conditions, and they suggest that a revised definition of blight makes more sense today. So they say blight is actually impairments on the physical fabric, so buildings, properties, public improvements, on community structure and social fabric, neighborhood vitality, security, public health, and welfare, or on the economy, property values, tax base, facility obsolescence, and employment base, all things that we are keeping an eye on through redevelopment areas. The Heritage District itself has been a town council-adopted redevelopment area for more than 30 years. During that time, the term slum or blight has never been used to promote the area and its opportunities for redevelopment, reinvestment, and revitalization. Just like the Heritage District, when discussing Northwest, antiquated slum and blight terms will not be used. The downtown Heritage District, which is the original townsite, serves as an entertainment district and community living room, and based on its designation, we've seen a number of positive outcomes. We've seen a community-driven vision, commitment to character, reduced neglect, increased property values, increased sales tax revenue generation that helps offset costs to our residents, and increased reinvestment. But I really want to be clear here that what's been the focus of the Heritage District as an entertainment district, as our community living room, and as the community's downtown is not what the effort is for Northwest. Northwest is its own unique area, and we talked about the importance of employment, about the residential and supporting neighborhood commercial in this area, and we want to celebrate what makes Northwest Gilbert unique and not mirror the downtown density or entertainment. We received questions about expansion of the Heritage District. Again, on the map, you'll note that it says the Heritage District is not included. This is not an expansion. Northwest is its own unique area. And then we've also received questions on, if you apply this designation over my property, how does that affect my property values? And the positive impact of the Heritage District investment can be seen by comparing the Heritage District's full cash value per acre to areas within a five-minute drive time. So the red is the Heritage District, the blue area is a five-minute drive time. The full cash value per acre in the HD Heritage District is approximately 2.5 million compared to 1.8 million in the buffer five-minute drive time. So the Heritage District value is, property is valued 37% higher than the areas within a five-minute drive time. So the next question, oh, let me, the property designation, there was another question about if I'm in this area, you apply this overlay, and I go to pull my title report and to sell my home, will that designation be tied to my house? And the answer is no, it's not tied to any property. It is an overlay but not tied to your property. And so in the next Prop 207, and what we refer to as a giblet, though, I am not the expert, so our attorneys can answer questions more in depth, but I will note that, again, we know that, you know, the statute was created in the 70s. It hasn't changed. But what has changed, and, okay, so it hasn't changed since the 70s, pardon me, and it does, in the statute, it does identify the ability to use eminent domain, but voter-approved measures since the inception of this redevelopment tool have limited the powers granted to municipalities under the statute. So specifically, Prop 207, which is a voter-approved measure in 2013, eliminated municipal use of eminent domain for economic development purposes. So as such, the statute does not grant any additional eminent domain powers to the municipality that it does not currently have authorized by the state. In fact, the statute actually requires an additional step for eminent domain in redevelopment areas by requiring council approval to begin conversations with property owners for acquisition related to public use. This additional step is not required in areas outside of a designated redevelopment area. And then in regards to the government property lease excise tax or giblet, there was a recent opinion piece published. We just wanted to note that, to date, Gilbert, which has had a redevelopment area in place for more than 30 years, has never used giblet in the Heritage District or elsewhere in the town. So keep in mind, no goals or strategies for this redevelopment area have been developed yet. And so that allows a tremendous amount of flexibility for the public to opine on which tools we should bring forth to council in a redevelopment plan and which we should not. So finally, we also had a number of individuals reach out to ask if this designation is simply an opportunity to provide multifamily developers a means for rezoning. And the designation of a redevelopment area doesn't change the already-established town-approved process as a private, for a private property owner to bring forward a rezone. So in other words, it's the same process inside or outside of a redevelopment area. And I want to reiterate that the required process states that first, we must determine the where, and then we can determine the how. And so once that's complete, staff is looking forward to working with the community on a plan. The plan has not been developed, so there are no goals related to development incentives as the question suggested, and the intent is really to identify tools that encourage and support reinvestment for not only Gilbert to reinvest in our properties, but to provide support to community property owners who want to reinvest in their own property. So let's just put a quick bow on this. There's a lot of things that redevelopment does. It commits to equality of life, it provides flexibility in an area, it gives more tools, it opens up opportunities for grants, it encourages reinvestment and decreases neglect, increases property values. And we've, we've heard from the community that they're less concerned about the commercial areas and really concerned about what it means for their, their single-family neighborhoods, and we completely understand that. Our single-family neighborhoods are the backbone of our community. So we provide these two examples. Arcadia is on the right. Arcadia is a redevelopment area, and you have million-dollar homes in this area, and this area is seeing reinvestment because of its designation. Again, a community-driven plan. The picture on the left is of Noel Gardens and Tempe. Those properties, just through, just through the neighborhood commercial investments that have been made through redevelopment, those properties have seen a 50% increase in their property values. So there is a tremendous amount of opportunity for redevelopment. For those who may have attended the last public meeting we met with, we had a panelist of individuals who shared their expertise with us in redevelopment areas, and we just, I'm not going to read all of these quotes, but just to show you, we had some individuals who wanted to provide testimonials. So Craig DiMarco, who owns Upward Projects, those in the audience that's supposed to know, enjoy riding in our community. Joe Johnson, who's a restaurateur and founder of Agratopia Downtown, again, Joe's Real Barbecue, Topo, and Liberty Market. And Jonathan Buford, who is the CEO and brewmaster for Arizona Wilderness. There can't be a peanut butter approach to this. Not every single area within the Northwest boundary is the same. And so we know residential, commercial, industrial, and the public realm all have differing needs. And our mission in Gilbert is to anticipate, create, and help people. This redevelopment effort, if adopted, allows us to do just that with the community at the table the entire way. So I'll remind you, Council, that we had three boundaries that we have been interacting with the community and understanding their desire for which boundary to bring forth to you for potential adoption. And today, we are here for Northwest Boundary. Again, Arizona Avenue to east, Lindsay to west, baseline on the north, and Ray to the south. It doesn't split neighborhoods. It creates a cohesive redevelopment area, again, that can really help elevate can really help elevate all of our neighborhoods, it can help elevate our commercial and industrial. It captures nearly 30% of Gilbert's non-HOA neighborhoods, again, those neighborhoods that need some specialized care. It addresses nearly 60% of Gilbert's aging properties that are 40-plus years old, provides more connectivity. We heard resoundingly from the community that they wanted to see more opportunities for bikeability and walkability, and you can see even through the trail systems that are encompassed under this, that we have some real opportunity here to build some goals around that. It reaches the greatest number of individuals on a fixed income and provides them tools and services. And then finally, mayor and council, it provides an opportunity to solve for the most calls for service and anticipate, create, and help people. So, with that, I know that was a longer presentation than I've provided in the past, but we wanted to provide all of the data and information to you, and we would recommend a motion to approve Resolution Number 4487.
Thank you, Amanda. You can take a breath now.
I'm not sure that you breathed through that whole thing. I almost stopped you once and said, please take a breath, because...
I can't tell the cadence or the pace at which I'm going, I think it's adrenaline when you're standing up here, so...
I know it is, and I've known you for a long time, so I get you, but, council, any questions for Amanda at this point? You will have more opportunity to ask her any questions. Wait, okay. Thank you, Amanda. And that completes your presentation at this point for you and Dan. Mayor, council members, yes, that completes our presentation at this moment.
Great, thank you. So, we have five members of the public that would like to speak. I will call you up one at a time to this middle podium. We'll start with Dora Lise Ladell. We'll put three minutes on the clock. Next will be Holly Shellcraft. One of those, but there we go, thank you.
Good evening, mayor, vice mayor, and council members. I just have a few comments about the redevelopment area, since I live in one. There are a lot of positives, but I think what you have to realize, that there are some negatives. And since the redevelopment, once I moved into that area, that's why I got engaged. That's why you see me here so often, because I never know what's going to happen. I never know if zoning will be changed. I never know if I'm going to have an overlay, or I never know if design guidelines will affect my property. I never know that. I never know when they're going to put a road in. The redevelopment, we lost our city park, it became the senior center. We have a basketball court. We're now losing Veterans Park, who's been there for a very long time, we're getting an overpass. I say that to you because Lacy Track was there since 1917, and we can't forget that because that's the character. I listen, and eminent domain always comes up. It is not on property records at all, but it's done through downzoning, upzoning, design guidelines, rules and regulations, and the town becomes basically the HOA. I think if an eminent domain, if the town really wants to put some teeth into it, I think, I would hope, there would be amendment, an amendment to this stating that this council forever will never take somebody's property for eminent domain. If that's your consideration in making Gilbert the best it will be, then do not put in there that you will claim eminent domain, because you can, and it has been done in the past. So, I just thank you, and I would hope that, there are positives, there's not all negatives, but I think the most important part, you really have to realize, this is about private property rights, and I think that that's the whole issue, and I think that's what I've given up, is some of my private property rights. We were downzoned, so I thank you.
Thanks, Dora Lise. Next is Holly Shellcraft. Following Holly will be David Baker, please.
Hello, mayor, vice mayor, and councilman.
Holly, can you make sure you speak right into the mic? You might need to lift it up, you're much taller than Dora Lise, sorry, Dora Lise. I'm a short person too, Dora Lise, you know that.
Okay, well, thank you for allowing us to speak tonight. Amanda said that a quarter of the people in the Boundary area live in, are over 65-plus. Well, I'm only 62, just want to make that clear, but I understand the comprehensive parks master plan is underway. So, when you're considering the revitalization of this area, I just want to ask that a lot of consideration is given to McQueen Activity Center, and I realize that Free Stone is just a squeak away from Lindsay, but pickleball, which is why I'm here, is huge for the, for the seniors, not only for the physical, but McQueen Activity Center doesn't even have room for pickleball during the summer. They have two courts during the fall at certain small times, but Free Stone, we have 50 people there on a regular basis every morning, and four of those people, not only for the physical activity, four of those people right now have cancer. One has stage four, in between her chemo. She is still coming there. Another man, I don't even want to discuss the things he's going through, but we are the only people that they see a lot of times, and not only is it good for the physical aspect, but for the emotional aspect, you know, when you're faced with what they're facing, and they're still getting up in between treatments and timing their treatment so that they can make it there, it's really important. So, when you consider the master plan and when you're considering the redevelopment, I just want to make sure that, as Dan said, it's Gilbert is live, work, development, and play that you remember, that a quarter of your seniors live here, and to try to drive to Gilbert Regional Park and play in 110-degree heat does not work well. And to wait a half hour for a court that's sometimes available at Free Stone is very difficult, and to have no court, just like the previous person was talking, is, is hard. So, if, I can encourage you all to remember the play part for us in the Northwest corridor, that would be great. Thank you.
Thanks, Holly. For the hot weather, we do have a business in Gilbert that's an indoor pickleball court, all air-conditioned, climate-controlled, FYI. I'm not promoting a business, I'm just saying, Google it.
Yes, but that, those can be very pricey.
I know. But, for summer, maybe. Thank you. Next, David Baker. And then next will be Thervishore.
Good evening, mayor and town council. Thank you for your work on the Northwest redevelopment activities. I think it's great, thank you and staff for working on that. I have two questions tonight. The first one is about timeline. I've looked at a couple of the presentations previously, so now I'm curious about kind of the big picture. I didn't see it in the presentation materials, but I've, I've seen the up-and-down curve of, we've been studying and looking. So, my question is how we transition crisply into execution, doing. We've been planning for a long time, so I'm wondering if we can establish kind of a big-picture timeline for moving through these phases. I heard the 10-year comments that kind of alarmed me, but I'd like to see us move forward. On that interactive map that's out there, there are many dots that are on there that have been there for years, so action down that path, I think, would be appreciated. Some more details there.
David, I'd love to maybe tackle that, I'll, I'll do my best. So, tonight, we'll kick this off if this passes and move to the next steps, which I believe would be a timeline of how they would be moving forward. Let me cover the 10 years for you, because I've been here for a lot of it. It has been an up-and-down battle with this not on its own, because of its own fault or process, it's been a whole bunch of other things. We had a time when we had elections, so we would put it on hold. We had a time when there was a pandemic, so we put it on hold, and then there was another election, so we put it on hold. So, it really was no fault of economic development or this redevelopment areas process that we were going through, it was so many other factors that got in the way. So, I hope that alleviates your concerns of why the 10 years took so long. I'd like to say it was even part of the recession, but it started after the recession, so I can't blame that, but it was so many other factors that just kept adding delays to this process.
I completely understand the cumulative effect, but I'm looking for the impact.
Yes, and so the next step will be, if this passes tonight, then they will start to work on a timeline as how they will be moving forward with this process. I think they don't want to get too far ahead either, they're wishing that it passes tonight, but they have to work on that first.
Second question was about this toolkit that was mentioned in the presentation. Not many details about that, I'd like to know more about it. And apparently, in unlocking this toolbox, we gained some benefits as a town, what are those, how do we take advantage of those during this 10-year window that's available to us? Thank you.
Thank you so much for your time. Thervishore? Oh, there you are, Therv. And next will be Bruce Walklin. Button's there, and it'll turn it on, it'll light up when it turns on. There you go, thank you.
Mayor, members of the council, I, I thought I put no comment on there, but since I'm, since I'm here, I, I would, I would, I came here, I'm opposed to this concept, some of the, was mentioned earlier, that this just becomes a large HOA. We've seen these development areas in other cities and other communities, you know, and really what this is, is it's the town council or whatever redevelopment board is, and they're picking winners and losers. We've seen businesses that have been established in those areas for years end up going, going away, you know, probably the biggest idea of that is the Bailey's Brake Shop over in Mesa controversy that went on, because they went and told those people that they couldn't be there, that they wanted that to be used, that corner still, I mean, I think they're putting either apartments or parking lots in there, and, and heaven knows, we don't need more apartments here in Gilbert, you know, if we want to stop slum. So, you know, I would ask you to oppose this concept, this is, this isn't the proper role of government, but, so thank you, thank you for your time, members of the council.
Thanks, Therv, thanks for coming out tonight, nice to see you. Sorry, you did check no, and I just didn't see it. Too many things going on, sorry, thank you. Bruce Walklin? I double-checked yours to make sure you wanted to speak, Bruce.
Mayor, members of the council, one thing I have not seen, heard, or seen is the effectiveness on property taxes across the rest of this, the town. Will that be addressed? And also, any new development of a property, will the property taxes be deferred? Or will they be, start paying property taxes right away after it's developed and started to be used? And if they are deferred, how much, how much time can we expect before they're starting to pay property taxes? And because areas will be affected because of this, will the rest of us be paying higher property taxes because of that? Thank you.
Thanks, Bruce, great questions. Gilbert's in a unique situation, we don't actually have a primary property tax, so this isn't going to affect the taxpayers on a primary property tax, all we have in Gilbert is a secondary property tax, it can only be collected to pay back voter-approved debt, and everybody has to be treated fairly and equally in the community, and that's under state law, we wouldn't be able to gift that to any member of the public or resident or business, because we would also run into the problem of a gift clause, which is a very big deal in the state of Arizona, too. I hope that answers your questions. Thank you. Those are all the slips that I have for anybody wishing to speak on this item. I will bring this back to the dais to start the discussion, and if you'd like to ask Amanda or Dan, any questions, or even Chris, any questions, we can go to there, and I think, Councilmember Torgerson, you have your mic on.
Yep, one of the first things I wanted to say, though, is about Bailey's Brakes. I have a business just down from there. The reason that you have protection from eminent domain for this kind of thing is Bailey's Brakes. He stood in the way, he fought, and he did the right thing. And Bailey's Brakes eventually decided to sell, but it wasn't forced and it wasn't eminent domained. And I actually have a block from the building in my office, because I respect that family, they fought, and it sits there right on top, well, on top of my umidor, and I'm waiting for Clint Bollock to come by and get his half of the block, because he was, he represented them. So, there is going to be no tomfoolery, if you want to call it, regarding that. You're very protected, and that is codified. I wanted to say that, that Dan and Amanda and Sydney, they do an amazing job with what they do. This is not taken to be something undercover. Your downtown, as they call it, the living room of Gilbert, is a redevelopment zone, but Gilbert, anything that, that you look at would have to come with council approval. There will be no property tax given away, there'll be no deferment, you'd have to, it can't even be done, I don't think. The, I was a little mistaken on the boundaries, I apologize, April, wherever you are, because I was wrong a little bit on the boundaries, but there, the, there are benefits to being there, and certainly you can say that maybe your zoning was somehow changed, zoning can be changed anywhere, but if you look at the property values, especially of some, a treasured business, as was Bergy's Coffee, it sold for an incredible amount of money, a family can retire, maybe they still want to be doing their coffee there, but they made a choice, and it did a lot for this town. And the, the downtown itself does a lot more for the overall economic prosperity of this town than you might anticipate. So, I would really suggest to listen closely to what they're saying, don't, obviously, trust and verify, but don't be looking at things as though somebody's trying to get over on you, nobody is trying to get over on you. Every single person on this dais, every single person over there, they want to do the best for this community. Please be involved, please listen to it, but I have, I have to say that I trust that my predecessors and the people that will come after me, will, people come after me all the time, the people will come after I leave, none of them will be looking to take your property to impose some separate, unique tax upon you, anything of the sort, and that is very much controlled by the actions of seven people that make policy. So, please listen with open ears, trust and verify as you must, but I believe that everybody that's participating on, let's call it, this side of the, the building has everyone's best interests at heart. I don't think anybody here would want to do anything to harm the people that they represent. And with that, Dan, can you tell us a little bit about how we don't use, let's say, giblets as opposed to redevelopment?
Sure. Mayor, Councilmember Torgerson, Amanda briefly mentioned government property lease excise tax, or what we generally refer to as giblet, as a, as a tool, essentially a financing structure for, for development. There's been a lot of conversations, a lot of questions, a lot of inquiry as of late as to the role of giblet and the role of redevelopment, and most recently, there was some questions that came into council asking you to not approve redevelopment, because redevelopment and giblet were essentially synonymous. We worked with town council, we worked with town manager's office, we worked with our legal department to get a better understanding of what, of what giblet does and does not in a redevelopment area, and at a, at a high level, giblets, you know, essentially are a development authorized by state statute. They have some added benefit from a giblet perspective in a redevelopment area if, and only if, a central business district is also, is also approved for this area at the moment. Amanda mentioned, we don't have this area, this Northwest area, or the downtown area identified as a central business district. We have never, in all the years that I've been with the town, and it is my understanding that there's never been a giblet deal done in the town of Gilbert, and the reminder that Amanda made during the presentation, you know, suggested that in 30-plus... that Amanda made during the presentation, you know, suggested that in 30-plus years of doing redevelopment in the Heritage District, tools and programs like giplit have never been used in the town of Gilbert. That said, I wanted to provide a general, high-level overview of, of giplit and its role in the redevelopment area. We've asked the, the general counsel here to provide specific details. If there's something specific that you're looking for, us to talk about, I would defer ultimately to our legal counsel if you'd like to get into anything specific about government property lease excise tax.
Chris wishes to continue the, the conversation.
Mayor, council, I'd, I'd just add that the discussion about giblets with regard to what's coming before the council, before the council tonight with this north west redevelopment area, I think it's either coming from a misunderstanding of interplay of two different statutes. In Title 36 is the redevelopment area. That's the statute that would, that you're using now to potentially create this. Title 42, 42 talks about the giblets. It's a completely separate statute, statutory scheme. It's not something that's come before the council tonight. As Dan mentioned, it's not something that I'm aware of ever coming before the council. So it's a different type of program. The one thing that giplit is, can be tied to a redevelopment area, if the council were to consider an agreement where there's this giplit offered, if it's done in a redevelopment area where a central business district has been created, and that's not before the council tonight, there's an extra benefit to the developer on the giplit. And that's where they talk about an eight-year abatement program of taxes. But just want to clarify, that's not before the council tonight. The council, to my knowledge, as Jan said, has never considered or at least never adopted any type of giplit agreement, like a number of other cities can, or have done. In order to do so, if the council were to approve that, the item tonight, create this redevelopment area, in order for a giplit to happen, the council would then at some future point have to create a central business district inside that formal action that the council would have to take. And then the council would have to come back with a development agreement with a particular developer to actually grant the giplit. That makes sense?
Thank you, Chris. Councilmember Tulkey.
Thank you, Mayor. That's for Amanda and Dan. I guess on the giplit, I don't foresee this council, or future councils even considering that in our toolbox, but I appreciate it being brought up. And I think it's great to have that on the record, that that is not anyone's intent. So that's, I don't think we can put that in the boundary. We're just approving the boundary today. But there were some comments from the public that I'm wondering if you could just address a little bit more before asking that. I love more pickleball courts and connectivity and parks within some of these neighborhoods. We heard, we heard loud and clear from the residents that came to the different public meetings that those types of livability items are important to them, and they want to have a say in how that could be directed in the future. But there was questions about eminent domain, so maybe you could just address that a little bit. And I know we're not approving any agreements because that's all going into the public, but just as a general comment about eminent domain. And then the timeline, I think the mayor covered that, but if there was anything you wanted to address, because I think it is important, knowing that we can't go to step two until we approve tonight, but that timeline is important to everybody who has an interest. And then I think we addressed property tax, but I wasn't 100% sure if, if the question was, would the rest of the community be feeling pressure on a property tax by investing in this? Or, you know, or would it just be that property? So if you can just kind of explain some of that, I think there was a little misunderstanding on property taxes.
Certainly, Mayor, members of the council. As it relates to eminent domain, and again, this is another area where I will speak at a high level, and then look to general counsel for additional clarity on, on the matter. But Amanda briefly mentioned it in, in the presentation, that with the establishment of a redevelopment boundary, that does not grant, warrant, or provide additional powers to the community, to mayor and council, to staff, to be able to use eminent domain. Eminent domain is, is absolutely a power within, you know, municipal jurisdictions and government jurisdictions to be able to use. But Amanda touched on it in the presentation, that, that essentially law has changed in such a way to say that eminent domain would not be used for the purpose of economic development. And so in the Bailey Brakes, you know, discussion, whether you have a brick on your humidor or whatever, as it relates to the, to the, you know, to the Bailey's Brakes thing, that, that was an eminent domain situation. I can't speak to whether it was eminent domain because there was a redevelopment area identified. I, I think that there's a loose connection there. I don't know enough about that particular case to be able to talk about that. I think there are others that probably do and that have studied that. But from our perspective, what I think is an overriding element as it relates to eminent domain is that we are not granted through redevelopment or the establishment of a boundary for redevelopment any more powers related to eminent domain than are otherwise granted to the municipality. And again, I'll turn over here to, to Chris Payne if he wants to offer any additional clarification on that.
Mayor, council, really, Dan summarized it correctly. There's no additional authority. As Amanda had mentioned in her presentation, there's actually additional requirements in a redevelopment area to exercise eminent domain. There's an additional notification requirement that doesn't exist outside of that. And what Dan referred to was the 2013 Private Property Rights Protection Act voter-passed initiative. And because of that, it actually modified the definition of eminent domain, restricted the ability of cities and other government entities to use eminent domain for purposes of economic development. So the statute, and I pulled it up here, it's 12, 1136 defines what a public use is. So cities can use eminent domain to widen a street, or for utility purposes, things like that. It expressly says, the definition of public use does not include public benefits of economic development. So that's prohibited by statute inside or outside of redevelopment area.
I'm going to throw in a follow-up to that, that I would like for you to answer, because we also heard that a request for council to pass that no future councils could use eminent domain. And I do not believe we can lock future councils into anything like that as a current council.
That's correct. Well, any subsequent council can revisit a decision of a prior council. So that is correct. And I would just add, adding that as a condition today would mean no road could get widened, no utility, if there's utility needs to, to, you know, to expand some utilities, that couldn't happen if that restriction was in place.
Mayor, members of the council, Councilmember Tulkey, did we address your question?
Even the, the property tax?
On eminent domain, we did. Now I think it's Amanda's turn.
Okay. I was going to say property tax, the property tax question, but we don't have a property tax, so.
Mayor, Councilmember Tulkey, to address the question on timing, so if you are to enact this redevelopment area this evening, it takes approximately six months to 12 months to develop a plan. Again, we want to have the community at the table. So we'll, we'll take as much time as we need to make sure that we get it right, get the right goals and tactics in place. And then that plan is in place for a 10-year period. And then sun sets at the end of that 10 years. But the idea would be that we would come before you, again, in six to 12 months for that adoption, and then hit that ground running. And to the, the gentleman who asked about the interactive map, one of our goals, regardless of if this is adopted tonight or not, is to start addressing some of those issues that we can on that map, because we know that they're affecting the community, and we want to help solve for those.
Did we cover it?
I think property taxes. What would be the impact on property taxes by approving this boundary tonight?
Mayor, members of the council, I don't have a great answer for what the impact of property taxes. I think the mayor addressed it briefly in, in her comments from the, from the community member or citizen that came up and talked about that. I'm not sure if legal has any additional perspective to offer on in what way redevelopment might impact property tax.
No, there's, there's really no tie to it. That's the giplit under Title 42, if the council, whatever, at some future time, consider doing that. The only thing I would say is, if it's successful, you potentially has what you saw in the redevelopment downtown area where the property, you know, the property value increased, your taxes would increase accordingly because your value's going up.
And since the town of Gilbert doesn't have a primary property tax, it can only affect your secondary property tax, and that by law can and will increase 5%. No matter what your home value is, the assessor's office by law, by a proposition that was passed in 2013 or 14 that went into effect, will and can increase by 5% every single year. And even the assessor can't change that because it was a voter-approved proposition.
Correct, Mayor. Just to add, it can only increase, that's, that's the cap. It won't necessarily increase by that amount.
Well, I say can and will because it's a, it's a two-level, it's a two-level issue. If you meet the full cash value, then it won't. But if you're still under that full cash value, then it will. And the majority of properties with AmeriCopa County will probably never meet that full cash value because that goes up the same time your property values are going up. Sorry. I was, that's my version of it. Councilmember Torgerson?
Yeah. And to put it in perspective, your, let's say your property doubles in value because of this. You're still only going 5%. You're not going up 5% of the new value. Your, your increases in your property taxes are set by the county, no matter how high your property goes. If you bought it for $100,000, it goes statistically 5% a year. Even if it's worth a million dollars, you're never going to catch up to it. So the, the increase in value, the unrealized gain that you have, you will not be taxed on inappropriately.
And that's that two-part that I was just referring to, Councilmember. Councilmember Bon Giovanni, you've been very patient. You've had your mic on.
I know. I've been quiet, too.
You have. Very patient.
Thank you.
I gave you credit.
Dan, anytime I get 50 emails, I have to address some questions. And we got a lot, and I appreciate that, actually. It tells me that we have a lot of concerned citizens and we have a lot of engagement, which is, which is great. Whether it's positive or negative, it's, it's great. So, can we build a big apartment complex on a two-acre property?
Mayor, members of the council, certainly I'd need to know more, but generally speaking, I guess the answer would be no. Certainly, related to redevelopment, redevelopment doesn't suddenly allow you to be able to develop a large apartment complex on a two-acre parcel.
Okay. Can we take property from people for economic development to build a big apartment complex?
Mayor, Councilmember Bon Giovanni, I think town attorney addressed that eminent domain can't be used for the purpose of economic development, and I believe that that's our answer.
Okay. So, does this actually provide corporate welfare subsidies to politically-connected developers to build apartments and other special interest projects?
Mayor, members of council, that, that question is certainly a loaded question, but I'm going to go out on a limb and say no. That redevelopment does not disproportionately create an environment where we are subsidizing developers.
Okay. Does this also provide corporate welfare subsidies to non-politically-connected developers to build apartments and other special interest projects?
Mayor, members of the council, Councilmember Bon Giovanni, again, no. Redevelopment doesn't create that sort of situation. And I think, as our town attorney talked about, gift clause and some of those other things would come into play when, when considering those types of scenarios.
Okay. And just so I get this down totally. Does it create existing residents and business owners? Will they see their property taxes increase to pay for sweetheart deals handed out to developers in slum and blight zones?
Mayor, members of the council, at its merits, no. Redevelopment doesn't create sweetheart deals.
Okay. Thank you. I think I, I think I nailed it. Thanks.
Did you hammer that home? Vice Mayor Anderson?
Thank you. The planner in me likes to look at the broad perspective of all of this. And I think you'd mentioned that we're a maturing community. And as such, we need to be able to, well, we just recently enacted our city, oh, I'm going to call it the community of the future for the mayor.
We want to call it the city of the future.
Either way, but we have an initiative called the City of the Future. And we're trying to protect Gilbert's quality of life. When you look at the normal cycle, life cycle of a city, it starts as a young community, it matures, it goes beyond maturity, and gets to a point where it's declining. All you have to do is look around at the other cities around us. You see that happening. We want to do our best to prevent that. And that's the reason that we have an area like this, where we can designate and help those three areas that we want to pay attention to, which is the, our economy. We want to make sure it's a vibrant economy there, the prosperity of, of that redevelopment area. We want to make sure that it's vibrant, as Mayor Lewis used to say, clean, safe, and vibrant. And then we need to pay attention to the infrastructure. Those are the three things that we need to pay attention to, to meet the objectives of the City of the Future. And I think this redevelopment area will go a long ways to doing that. And I think the, the people that live there will see that we are protecting that quality of life the best we can through tools like this. And I appreciate the presentation you two gave. Thank you.
Councilmember Buckley?
Good afternoon, evening, night, whatever it is now. I have a question, and I'll be fairly quick. I've gotten numerous, nothing quite as entertaining as what Councilmember Bon Giovanni got. But is, or is there in, any time in the future, the name of the redevelopment ever going to be called blight and slum?
Mayor, members of the council, as Amanda mentioned in the presentation, we don't refer to any area in the community as, as slum and blight. Certainly through the establishment of redevelopment, and as we look at the statute and how and when it was created, words like slum and blight certainly come into play into the statute. From a community response, from a community mission perspective, as we anticipate, create, and help people, initiatives like redevelopment are designed to anticipate community decline, community maturation, and work with the community in order to develop tools, programs, tactics, strategies, lots of different ways with which we can build a plan to ensure that we are creating tools for reinvestment, and tools for redevelopment, and tools for, for businesses as well as residents to be able to invest in their, or reinvest in their own properties. And so we can't get around the fact that the statute uses words and phrases like slum and blight. We choose to use words like reinvestment, redevelopment, and revitalization to rid the area of decline. And working with the community to develop a program of activities that can be used, that can allow community members to reinvest in their properties, is what's important. As it relates specifically to your question, as staff, we don't talk about or address things like slum and blight in the community, but we do anticipate build-out. We do anticipate community maturation. We do anticipate things like needed infrastructure and other things in order to create the place where the community wants to invest. And as we take those principles, we choose to look at things like neglect, decline, flight, not slum and blight.
Very well. Thank you very much.
Mayor, Councilmember Buckley, if I could just add, and Amanda had talked about the definition, I think when you hear the word blight, everyone has a picture in their head of a commercial property or a neighborhood. But as Amanda talked about what the definition of blight is, in my mind, that, that word should be updated in the statute because what it actually says in the statute for what blight is, the dominance of defective or inadequate street layout, right? That doesn't really, that, that's blight under the statute. Another, diversity of ownership. There's unsanitary, unsafe conditions, faulty lot layout, improper obsolete subdivision plating. Those are all, any one of those findings by the council means it's blight under the redevelopment area. So I understand why it's, people hear blight and you have a picture in your mind, which everyone does, but that's not what the actual meaning of blight is under the redevelopment statute.
All right. Thank you. Well, and I brought that up because I, I have gotten numerous, numerous emails and of residents, and they don't want their area. They said, you know, they said, we don't live in a slum- and they don't want their area, they said, you know, they said, "We don't live in a slum and blight area, we don't want our home to be called that." So, I think that's important and I think you, I think you, you know, described that very well and maybe we can do a resolution to change that.
Councilmember Torgerson?
Just as, hopefully wrapping all this up, with all the dozens of cut and paste emails, let's call it, emailing through voter voice means I'm unable to respond, I'm not quite getting all the information. If you want to email me, jim.torgerson@gilbertaz.gov, I can answer you, but when it comes through an automated system, it doesn't work the same way. And when you have somebody's ear, it's great, you've got my ear, so let's, let's use it, respond to me individually, or if you want the whole council, councilmembers@gilbertaz.gov, but using an automated system, it just shows a cut and paste email. So, let's, I'm up for communicating with you at any time, it's just kind of hard when I don't have all the response information available to me.
Yeah, can I add to that?
I just wanted to add to that, you can respond to each one of us individually by just using our first name dot, our last name at gilbertaz.gov. So, any of us, and Councilmember Torgerson's correct, that if you want to email us directly and, and we want to talk to you, we want to email you back, so just, you can email any of us in that aspect.
I'll make it easier, go to gilbertaz.gov and the council member page and everybody's emails are there individually, or you go councilmembers@gilbertaz.gov, mayor@gilbertaz.gov because trust me, nobody spells my name right, so you'll never get my first name and last name, but yes, we do want to hear from you, when it is a form email like that, it's very difficult and they came in fast and furious and I checked some of the addresses on them, they didn't live in the northwest corridor, they were all over Gilbert, so I think when you know you're hearing from the actual residents of the actual area that we're discussing, it's a whole different topic too, right? We want to hear from the residents that this will affect directly and we heard from some tonight and I'm thankful for the people that came out and thank you for being so friendly and nice and cordial and getting your points across and asking your questions. Any other questions for Dan and Amanda, or can I let them sit down now? Thank you, Dan and Amanda, for all this work, I know it's been a long 10 years, I appreciate everything that you've done on this topic and looking forward to this discussion tonight. I will go ahead and close the public hearing and bring it back to the dais for any further discussion or if somebody would like to make a motion, I'm open to that.
Mayor?
Yes, Councilmember Tilke?
I didn't know if you were looking for who was first.
Sorry.
First, I want to thank the team, they've worked very, very hard in communicating with the residents and a lot of outreach and very interactive outreach and I want to thank all of the residents who came out time and time again to provide their feedback and then the emails and all of that that we've received. This project is really near and dear to my heart. For, for over 10 years, I've been wanting to make sure that we are not only dealing with the growth within Gilbert, but looking at the older sections of our community and make sure that they don't deteriorate so that we don't start that cycle Vice Mayor Anderson was talking about. And there are going to be a lot more public meetings, I, I will say Parks and Rec has set the bar high and Amanda and Dan are going to, I know, meet and exceed those expectations and we are going to have a lot of feedback from our community. It's very, very important that we don't misunderstand that this is community led, this isn't council led, it's not staff led, at this point of these, once this boundary is accepted, now it's the community giving feedback on what they want and I'm looking forward to that. With that, I'll make a motion, do you want to speak first?
Yeah, I just want to, thank you, Mayor, I'm sorry. I just want to point out, we are only voting on the boundary right now, we're not approving anything inside, we're just approving the boundary itself. Thanks.
Thank you.
I'll just want to make a follow up, sorry, before we make a motion, sorry, I asked for a motion. I wanted to point out what Councilmember, Vice Mayor Anderson said about the City of the Future, it's an initiative that was started here by the staff to make sure that we face these issues head on and ahead of time. We want to make sure that we're not falling into the pitfalls that cities before us have fallen into and that's why it's so important to do that. And Vice Mayor gives me a hard time, it's not that I don't like the initiative, it's that I, that calling it the City of the Future, our residents struggle with because they think we're trying to turn Gilbert into a city. We are still the town, we are not in any way looking to become a city in any way, shape or form, but that's just, the town of the future just doesn't sound right, like it doesn't have the same effect as the City of the Future, so now the Vice Mayor's been calling it the Community of the Future, so we make sure that we, we have, being here in Arizona, being such a young state, being such young communities, I come from the east coast, I'm sure many of you have moved here from other parts of the country, I've been here almost 30 years now, but when you have come from other parts of the country that are so old and they have done things the same way for so long, being here in a young state and young communities and you can learn from the mistakes that were made by all of those communities and cities and states ahead of us. We have that opportunity here in this region and I think we do it well, I think Gilbert does it well, I think AmeriCopa Association of Government does it well, I think we all work really well together to make sure that we're moving this area together the right way and learning from those mistakes of the past. The way our freeways are laid out, if you've ever been to Boston, gosh, I mean, that's where I'm from, I would never drive into Boston on any given day and I'll drive into Phoenix any day of the week, it's completely different. So, we are, that's what we are here to do, is to make sure that we are capturing this and making sure that this community is looking good into the future, that's what our goal is and to make sure that you're all protected and your property values are protected. And we hear the pickleball thing, we hear it and we hear it over and over again and we, and the parks are trying to accommodate those requests too, so, thank you, Councilmember Tilke.
Thanks, Mayor, with that, I'll make a motion to approve item nine, resolution number 4487, approving the Northwest Gilbert Redevelopment Area Boundary.
I second that.
I have a motion by Councilmember Tilke, seconded by Councilmember Buckley, please vote. And that motion passes 6-0. Congratulations, Economic Development, it's a long time coming, appreciate all the work that you've done on this and we are going to recess for a few minutes.
Okay, 10 seconds, everybody take your seats, please. Okay, next up on our agenda, I'll call this meeting back to order, next up on our agenda is item number 10, Code of Gilbert. Did we want a presentation on this, did you have some questions for staff, or did you just want to have a discussion?
No, I'm going to make a motion.
Oh, no, actually, somebody asked to speak about this one, and I actually have two, two members of the public that would like to speak.
Mayor, I don't need a presentation, I just wanted to make a couple of comments before I make a motion.
Okay, I'll open the public hearing on item 10, I will, I have two slips from residents that would like to speak. I have Dora Leece, if you would like to come down first, Dora Leece Ladell, and then Chris Lindahl. On deck, Chris Lindahl on deck, I still haven't figured out which button it is, Dora Leece, one of those two buttons, there you go, thank you.
Good evening, again, I just have a couple of quick questions regarding HOAs, I have property with HOAs. My question is, will this affect the HOAs and will they be accountable even if the, it's not within their HOA guidelines, or whatever it is? My second question is, I think the mayor brought it up one time, about someone looking over on a two-story house and looking over. If you could just touch on the, the height requirement, if there is one, and how that will affect the residents, and that's it, thank you.
So you questioned Dora Leece before you ran away, because I can talk to you during a public hearing. So your question is, if I own a two-story house, and you own a one-story house, and I can see into your backyard, would you be able to call code enforcement on items like that?
Yeah, you don't really like my yard, so yes.
Okay, but I got your question in a nutshell, thank you. Would staff like to come, well, let me do the next person coming up to speak, thanks. And the HOA, somebody write those questions down, so you can answer them, thank you, sorry, I have a cracker in my hand, sorry. Next up to speak, Chris Lindahl, thank you, Chris, sorry, I'm getting a little wacky tonight.
Good evening, Mayor, and members of the council, my name is Chris Lindahl, I live at 1199 South Park Grove Court here in Gilbert. I'm here to talk about this ordinance in opposition to it, because up until this point in time, I've been able to have a project car in my backyard, and per my reading of this document, that will no longer be allowed. So my son and I won't be able to build a car in our backyard, or restore a car in our backyard, that's per my understanding. Because that probably will take a lot more than 15 days, which is all that this document provides. The second point I have is that inspections to the backyards and potentially home interiors are triggered, it's my understanding, by a complaint from a neighbor with visibility of the backyard in question being allowed from a second-story window next door, that is my understanding. I have a walled and gated, fully enclosed backyard, but that won't protect me if I have a two-story home next door from visibility. I'm wondering how this is in conformance with Section 42-321D in this document, which says it's in conformance with the Arizona and US Constitution. I see this as being a form of a violation of the Fourth Amendment, freedom from protection of illegal searches and seizures. Because a complaint, a single complaint, does not fall under the same standards that, say, the police wanted to serve a warrant. They would have a process they'd have to go through, it would take a lot more than one person complaining about it in order for that to happen. There would have to be probable cause, there would be a number of things that would be implemented before a judge would grant a policeman a warrant to search a house, but that's not in this document. And it also includes in this document the ability for that inspector to expand their search or review of what's going on, based on their own assessment. That does not seem to me to be fair and respectful to the residents of the town. Section 42-322 notes that the town is not required to notify an owner of a violation, which I thought was quite strange. But I'll read it to you here, upon inspection, if the town finds a violation of this ordinance, the town may notify the owner, owner's agent, or responsible party through the issuance of a notice of violation. If a notice of violation is issued, it shall include, and then it lists several criteria. In that same section, item number C, says, nothing in this section shall require the issuance of a notification or violation prior to the commencement of a civil violation procedure. So the town could proceed with the civil violation about my backyard without notifying me, i-if my reading is correct. Last point I wanted to make was, my HOA currently has no authority to police what goes on in my backyard. If approved, this proposed ordinance will effectively enable the town's code compliance department to serve as an enforcement arm of HOAs, expanding their reach beyond what is granted by the CCNRs that I signed when I moved into my home. The last thing I'd like to add is, if council proceeds with approving this document, there are a few things that I would respectfully request be added to them. In Section 42-317B, it notes that neatly stacked lumber is allowed. I would request that neatly stacked bricks and neatly stacked ceramic tile be added to that list of allowed things for a future landscape project in my own backyard. I'd also request that to be included, a list of exempt items which are okay in the backyard, so therefore not subject to someone's interpretation, things like a lawnmower, wheelbarrows, lawn tools, ladders, tree trimmers, that sort of thing. Thank you for your time, I appreciate you giving it to me.
Chris, can I ask you one question before you step away?
Certainly.
Do you have two-story houses around you?
Both sides.
Thank you.
Lucky me.
Me too, thank you. Can I have someone from staff come up and address some of those concerns and questions, please? I saw you back there deliberating.
Mayor and council, good evening, yes, we've got quite the team that's worked on this, folks from code compliance, planning, legal department, even economic development, we've all put our heads together and worked on this for quite a while. The first question, HOA, will they be accountable? So the town does not enforce CCNRs, HOAs are still responsible for any type of violation that they would have with the CCNRs, it's not the town's intent to, to become an arm of the HOA in any given way, shape, or form. In fact, we've even added some language into this document, that talks about the intent of the document is for HOAs to be the first line of defense if there are CCNR problems, and then the town would enforce our, our code requirements. The question about somebody looking down from a second-story window into somebody's backyard, yes, that, that is how the code is written, that that could be a, a complaint that could be filed with the town, especially if there are, and you can remember some of those pictures, there are lots of litter and junk and trash and cars and everything else, we don't want to end up with a lot of, a lot of issues or problems, so the way we did write this is it could be. Now, one thing I will say is, it is also discretionary upon our code compliance guys, so, code compliance men and women, excuse me. When they are on-site, they, they, they can make some of those judgment calls, and they have a little bit of discretion in what they're doing, and what, what they're actually enforcing and writing violations on.
Kyle, can we go one at a time instead of, and I hate to interrupt you, but, so, the mic comes on. So my concern would be, and Chris gave a perfect example, a project car versus a hoarder that has a car that's a mess in their backyard, so code enforcement would have discretion.
Right, and the way the code is written right now, you can't have one car in the backyard and work on it. There's a difference between an operable and an operable vehicle, but again, if there's, to your point, if there's one car back there and there's lots of other litter or, or issues, that's a problem. If somebody's got a car in the backyard that they're working on with their son, that is not going to be a problem as long as the, the rest of the property is in, is in good shape.
So it's almost like a cumulative effect, if the, if the yard is also strewn with other items, plus the scars back there, and parts, and stacked wood, and all kinds of other things, that, that would be the discretion of code enforcement?
Correct.
Can, can we take a couple of minutes and show us some of those pictures, so the public can see what we're talking about?
Do you have your presentation with you to show some of those photos?
And, Mayor, council members, if I just may clarify, the actual draft of this code is silent as to neighbors looking in, second-floor neighbors looking in, it wouldn't prohibit that, and I imagine that that's how we would, the town would receive complaints, because there would be no other way. We would, as a town, we wouldn't be able to inspect the backyard without their consent, or some type of court or administrative warrant, and those protections are encoded in this draft, so I just wanted to clarify that.
Thanks, Elena, Elena's one of our town attorneys, too.
If that's getting pulled up, if I could just add, in that 42-321 subsection D says, and that's the authority and inspection section, it says, "All inspections shall be conducted in compliance with the constitutions of the United States and the state of Arizona." The Fourth Amendment absolutely does apply, the town would have to comply with the Fourth Amendment if they're going to do inspections inside a backyard.
And, in a lo, in most cases, I would say, I mean, I couldn't see over somebody's fence, it would have to come from something above, I'm too short, again, Dora Leece, sorry, smart people. I would not be able to see over somebody's block wall into their backyard, so it would most likely come from a neighbor looking in from a second story, a lot of times, maybe. But this is, this is why we're looking at this kind of a situation, Chris, see this photo right here? Because of a situation like this, which would be more of a cumulative effect, like I just mentioned, where you have, I would say, an inoperable car and strewn with all kinds of other junk, that code enforcement would take all of that into consideration, not just a, a vehicle that you would be potentially working on. I can have you talk to staff, but I can't have you come back up, if that makes sense. Kyle, next.
Mayor, I think those were all of the questions, if I wrote them down correctly.
So, Chris also mentioned, this Chris, mentioned, does it pertain to like lawn equipment? Or, it says neatly stacked wood, I think his exact example was, but what if you have neatly stacked cement blocks because you have a future project going on in your yard, and your neighbor calls because they don't like your stacked blocks in your backyard?
Right, again, a lot of it's going to be discretion, if, if an inspector comes to the, the property and sees this, this is not neatly stacked and, and in good working condition. As I understand it, Chris has a pad or two in the backyard, concrete pad, which he would park the cars on, and in our discussions, that would be, that would be fine, I don't, we don't see that there would be any, any issues with that.
And so, to just follow up with what I would probably be thinking if I was Chris and asking the questions that he did, if code enforcement gets a complaint and they come up to the property, how do they actually go about seeing the backyard?
Right, I'm going to ask Lori to come up and talk about it.
Oh, Lori Diorio, yes.
She's in charge of our code compliance team, so she will have a better handle on it than I would.
Well, then, I'm glad I asked the question, because you're stuck around until 9:16, so you can answer something, Lori.
Thank you, Mayor, council members, good evening.
Speak up to the mic, okay, please, thank you.
It's the first time I'm here for this, this actually venue. As well as what we currently have to look at when we receive a complaint, it's through consent or warrant. So if the resident on the adjacent property is consenting to allow us to view the violation, that's potentially the issue, as always, and you've known me for as long as I've been a supervisor over code enforcement. We have great discretion when it comes down to specific situations. We work with residents on a daily basis when it comes down to violations, and specifically when it comes down to an inoperable vehicle, if there are extenuating circumstances, we will surely always work with the resident on a reasonable timeframe to get that vehicle either in the garage, out of sight, or operable. So extensions are just part of what we do.
Thanks, Lori, I appreciate that, and I have known you for, I think, as long as you've worked with the town of Gilbert, you've come with great experience, and I, I don't think I've ever had a complaint about any of the work that you've done, so I appreciate that, from that perspective. Any other questions or comments for staff, while they're here? Councilmember Tilkay?
Thanks, Mayor. I know that you guys have put a lot of time in this, and I appreciate all of that. You know, I had some concerns from the beginning, as some of our residents have expressed. It is our culture in development services to react to complaints, not go out and proactively look for them. And I believe, even with this enforced, that that will continue. We're also asking that the staff brings us a report every three months for the first year, so that we can identify if there's anything in this ordinance that isn't working. And that will give the public an opportunity to let us know it's not working, and so that gives, with that assurance, that gives me more comfort in approving this ordinance. I just wanted to mention, I, I see that when we, if we make a motion to approve, there's a whole thing, and I'm hoping we're going to put it up on the screen, instead of right, reading it all and expecting everybody to remember it. But the, I appreciate the addition of the intent as it relates to HOAs. That was a concern of mine, is that all of a sudden, the HOAs don't have to accommodate any complaints within their community, they'll just turn it over to the town, so I appreciate that. And we've also included that the town of Gilbert is not exempt from being the good neighbor in this ordinance as well, and that, that was important to me, so thank you. As an aside, just because I, I know once we vote, we're done with the topic. One of the things I noticed, and, and staff's not going to be surprised that I'm asking for this, but I want to know if the council agrees with it. We had the ordinance, and then we had a study session, so we got the strike through and the caps, but when we got the changes based on our input, there was no designation of what those changes were. And unfortunately, I didn't have my notes with me, and I couldn't find the sections, because you know I'm very good at outlining the sections and all of that, but, so I, I had to keep reading it and reading it to try to find if the comments that I wanted in there, and it was just my fault. But I'm, I'm just wondering if the, just kind of as a direction, that when we have changes made at a study session, that it's highlighted in the packet, so it's very easy for us to find those in the future, instead of having to read the entire document, compare it to any notes that I might have, and so, it can be in yellow, I don't care, but at least we know that something's been changed, so if there, I just thought if no, if nobody else wants it but me, I'll just be the only one asking for it every time from the staff, but.
No, thank you, that's a great point, and I think staff will take that note moving forward, so that, especially when it's something that we do at study session, when we get to study session, a lot of times, the first time we're seeing the document is at study session. And so if we're sitting there talking through changes that we would like to see, it's hard to maybe track all of those when we come back weeks and sometimes months later with an amendment. And so that's a great point, Councilmember Tilkay. Did you have more questions for Kyle, because he's standing here? Got any questions for staff, are we good with questions for staff? Kyle, thank you very much.
Yes, Mayor, the only one thing I wanted to add is, there is on the dais tonight, a couple of little changes that we found.
And that's what Councilmember Tilkay was referring to, and asked if it could be put up on the screen, so thank you, if we could just leave that right there, thank you, Kyle.
Thank you.
I'm going to go ahead and close the public hearing and bring it back to the dais for discussion.
Mayor?
Yes?
Something like this, well, I can understand a need, certainly you look at one of those pictures, it's, that's actually a fire hazard, I mean, that's just, that's bad. But when it comes to, I know it when I see it, and discretion, I have a problem with that. And, and I don't know if I can quite get over, because I understand the intent, and there's a need, but at the same time, we're relying on a certain amount of discretion, somebody's interpretation of, I know it when I see it. I mean, that was, that was a Supreme Court Justice that said that, Potter Stewart. It's hard for me to for me to, to, to just say yes. What is it you're, you know, you're, I'm okay with your decision on what this is. I'm okay. You see it and you feel that. Uh, I have a hard time turning that power away from the, the property owner, away from us, over to a, a, a code enforcer and giving them that responsibility. And if we were to do so, I would really think that having some sort of sunset clause, like true sunset clause where it's truly reviewed to see if it's been abused, complaints, anything like that. Because I certainly wouldn't want to live next to that photo. And I have probably the only two-story house for quite a bit in my neighborhood. But at the same time, one man's junk's another man's treasure. And I have a hard time inflicting my own, uh, desire. I don't have a junk car out there. I have a junk car in my, in my shop, but I don't have it in my backyard. And, uh, I, I have a hard time with that. And if we're going to do something like this, I really want to see it with some sort of, of sunset so we can, and continually with that. So it's, so we'd look and see if it's being abused, if we have problems with people that are, it's taken out of context, it's taken too far. Uh, I don't want people to have to come back in three years and have, be getting sued for it, if that makes sense to you.
So I guess my follow-up to your comments, um, we have different groups within the community, within our town staff, that it really is primarily their job to be discretionary, right? I would say police and fire to a point. They are trained to do things the way that they do things, but they have discretion. And we even put that in place with our unruly gathering ordinance. I would say they have discretion on how that moves forward, right? So I think we're saying the same thing about code enforcement and it's something that they do and have done every single day in Gilbert, complaint-based. So this isn't code enforcement going out looking for these issues. This is, somebody has reported these issues to code enforcement and then they go out and use their discretion. So I, I agree with you that this is an unusual situation and new for us, especially in Gilbert. And I'm never the one to want to put requirements in place. But because of the extreme situations that I've seen over the past eight years in the community, we need something with teeth to it. And the backyard that we saw is, I'm sure, a perfect example of that, right? Um, we saw lots of photos there that are just, I think we were all surprised at, but I know that they exist within the community. And we have neighbors that have struggled with having these situations beside them, behind them, close to their property. Fire hazards, health hazards, rats, all kinds of situations. So I would not like to impose a sunset, but I would definitely say anything Councilmember Tilke brought this up is, this needs to come back with a review and data and information to the council. And if we want to say that six months from now, let's do a six-month checkup. Once this goes into effect, let's do a six-month check-in with council to see what the calls have looked like, what the response has been. If we're going to get complaints, we've given out our addresses to everybody for them to write to us to be able to do that. So, over and over again tonight, right? Um, so I would like to maybe do it from that perspective.
Uh, Mayor, I just wanted to mention that during the studies, this session, I believe we agreed every three months. And that way, we're on top of it a, a little more timely for the first year.
I thought there was a review. I'm sorry, I couldn't remember that. There's too many topics sometimes. And so three months. So we see, put this into effect. If this passes tonight, put this into effect, have them come back in three months. That would be this seven people to review this for the first time and then maybe go three months out from there. But I, I see what I'm saying about, we do have other departments in this community that are working on a discretionary basis and we're putting them in that place. The unruly gathering is a perfect example of that, in my opinion. Any other comment? Vice Mayor?
Just a reminder that, again, that we're a maturing community. We need tools. This is a tool. Um, I once served as a zoning administrator with the responsibility that Lori has right now to supervise code enforcement. The first priority is to work with the property owner and try and get things worked out. Um, and without even having to use tools like this, um, I know Lori does that, uh, quite often, trying to work out and resolve issues before they, nobody wants to take anybody to court. Um, and this is a tool that will just help. It's almost a last resort, really, when we get to using this, uh, as the enforcement tool. But, um, I'm impressed with the way our code enforcement works right now in trying to help the property owner versus trying to challenge the property owner. And I, I appreciate that. And I like the idea of bringing it back and reviewing.
Thank you. Any other comments? Would anyone like to attempt a motion? And the motion is going to include what we have here on the screen.
Okay, Mayor, I'll do this. Um, uh, before I do that, um, could we ask staff to follow up with Chris? He had several concerns and I'd really like, you know, you to have a talk with him and make sure that we address all of those. Thank you. Um, so with that, I'll try to make this motion. Um, I'd like to approve item ten, the Code of Gilbert, um, Community Preservation Ordinance with the amendments as listed on the screen. I don't need to read them if I do that right. I, I think they've been up there long enough everybody can- That one line or-
One, one, the two-
Oh, at the very top?
The two bullet point, uh, actually the first bullet point and the second bullet point. Starting with page four, strike.
Okay. What's on the screen or what's on my paper?
I think it's the same thing. Um, does she need to read it or can we just say, "as presented this evening"?
I think that's fine.
Okay. Thank you. "As presented this evening and noted on the, the screen, um, with, uh, the addition of a report every three months for the first year."
Take it.
I have a motion by Councilmember Tilke, seconded by Vice Mayor Anderson. Please vote. Motion passes five-one. Next item on our agenda is item number ten. I asked to pull this. I'll call the, I'll open the public hearing, close the public hearing. Thank you, team. Thank you for your work on this. Um, I'll open the public hearing. I don't have any public, I don't have any comic cards.
Mayor, ten, ten A.
Sorry, ten A. Sorry.
Just to clarify, yeah. Thank you.
Sorry, it's getting late. Ten A, um, an agreement, um, Considered Option of Ordinance Number twenty-nine oh-nine, Approving Judicial Services Employment Agreement Number three-two-four-zero-zero-zero-four-five-one, Appointing Lauren Ramirez as Judge in the Gilbert Municipal Court, effective July eighth, twenty-twenty-four. Um, any discussion or anything? I just wanted to make a comment about this. I'll close the public hearing. Bringing it back to the dais, I just wanted to say that, um, Lauren Ramirez is a, an, an amazing attribute to our court system. And for us to be able to bring this forward and to bring her on as a judge at this point in time is, uh, was very important. And I know, I know Judge Kutchin called me because they're all gone to a conference and he felt bad that they wouldn't be here. And he's going to actually thank me because it's nine-thirty-one at night and they probably didn't want to have to sit here the whole entire time for us to bring this forward. And I just wanted to say thank you to Judge Kutchin for bringing this to our attention. Thank you for the, to the council for, um, looking at this option. And, um, I would like to make a motion to pass this agreement, ordinance number twenty-nine oh-nine.
I'll second that.
I have a motion by the mayor and seconded by Councilmember Bon Giovanni. Please vote. And that passes six-zero. And I want to say congratulations to Judge Lauren Ramirez. Thank you, Chris, for that work, for the work on that, too. That will end our public hearing items and move us to the consent calendar. Vice Mayor, it's all yours.
Thank you, Mayor. We have several items to be pulled. Item fourteen, we'll pull. Item twenty-four. Item twenty-five C. And item thirty-one was postponed, so that's not included. So my motion be to approve items eleven through thirteen, fifteen through nineteen, twenty through twenty-three, twenty-five A and B, and D and E, twenty-six through twenty-nine, thirty, and thirty-two through thirty-six. That's it.
So I have a motion as stated by the Vice Mayor. Anybody like to make a second?
I make a motion as stated by Councilman.
Um, you need to second the motion, Councilmember.
Oh, I seconded.
Second the mo, so I have a motion by the Vice Mayor, seconded by Councilmember Buckley. Please vote. Motion passes six-zero.
Item fourteen, Councilman Torgeson.
You know, I, the first thing I want to say is I, I very much believe in the program that's being done down there for a wayfinder system. I believe that, that the people that work on this project have done a great job. Uh, I have a problem with the dollar figure attached to it. And it has some, it's because it's my field of expertise. And, uh, in discussion with Patrick and the people in, uh, redevelopment, uh, I think in the future it'll, it'll be handled slightly differently. But for that reason, I am opposing number fourteen while recognizing they've done a great job. But I cannot, in good conscience, approve that dollar figure.
Thank you. Would anyone like to make a motion on item number fourteen? Oh, did Vice Mayor, would you still have your mic, mic on for?
No.
Let's, I'm sorry, just to show them.
I, I have a comment and question. Um, Councilman Torgeson, if you feel this is way out of line, how long would it take for a process to get another bid or take a look at this cost?
I, I think that's more of a staff question than a me question. Uh, I think they did it according to the rules that are in front of them. Uh, I think they did it to the best of their knowledge. I, uh, so I, in no way, shape, or form do I want this to reflect on staff. But it is something to do with our process. It's something to do with maybe having some subject matter experts assist further than they have in the, in processes like this. And I, I, I really don't feel like casting any aspersions. That young lady up there worked very hard. And it's not, it's not her fault that she's not a subject matter expert. It's not. She's great. I, I think she does great work. So I, I'm just voting no on the dollar figure. It's not to do anything with the project or the people involved.
Hi, Sydney. Thank you for coming down. Would you like to add anything? You, it's not necessary, but just wanted to give you the option.
Yes, just was going to answer, um, Councilmember Bon Giovanni's question. So Mayor Peterson, Councilmember Bon Giovanni. So, um, this followed the traditional RFP process and it took about two months, um, from when it was originally posted to coming before you tonight. So a similar type of process to get on a council agenda and it would be a little bit more delayed due to the break in July, um, would be expected for another RFP process if that were to be another option.
Thanks, Sydney. Um, I, and I, I know, Councilmember Torgeson, your feelings on this. I, I was so thankful to finally see wayfinding signs on an agenda tonight because I've been asking for this for years. We've been talking about it for years. And to have to delay it another two, three, four months is, because once they get made, then it's installing them. We know every delay causes more delays and that's just my feeling. So if, if anyone would like to, I will move to approve item number fourteen and the service agreement that was presented to, to us this evening.
Mayor, I'll second that.
Thank you. I have a motion by the mayor, seconded by Councilmember Tilke. Please vote. Motion passes five-one. And I want to say thank you, Councilmember Torgeson, for being a subject matter expert on this and for bringing it to staff's attention and hoping to create a better process in the future for the next set of wayfinding. Because this is phase one. So there'll be more phases coming up. Vice Mayor?
Item twenty-four, Councilmember Torgeson.
I, I would like staff to, to make a small presentation here. And a lot of it is for the public's benefit because this did, as we spoke yesterday, this started out at sixty million dollars when it was first brought up and even still brought to people's attention a year and a half ago at sixty, sixty-five million. And we're looking at approximately a hundred and twelve million dollars. And I want the, the information brought public.
Awesome. Can you hear me? All right. Uh, Councilmember Torgeson, we appreciate the opportunity and Mayor, Council to present, um, kind of what we've put together thus far for the Ocatillo, um, Bridge Project, or as we see here, the Ocatillo Road, Greenfield to Higley Project. Um, so just a brief project description, just to kind of outline where this, where this project lies. So basically, this project is on Ocatillo Road in between Greenfield Road and Higley Road. Um, this will be basically a roadway extension incorporating four different bridge structures within this area, um, including Roosevelt Water Conservation District, East Maricopa Floodway, Chandler Heights Regional Basin, and Queen Creek Wash. So just an important note to make, this is four different structures. It's not just one bridge. Um, so there's, there's a lot more extensive work when you do that. So the project why, um, so the number one that we have on the project why is improving public safety. So currently, you can see the map down below and that's our, uh, fire and police are the times currently because you can't access from Higley Road to Greenfield currently and vice versa from Greenfield Road to Higley Road. There's no way, um, to make it across that. So they have to go around to be able to get across this, this corridor. They have to go around, um, for those services. Um, in addition, it's the connectivity. So they kind of go hand in hand, but trying to create that connectivity, not only for Gilbert, but you have Queen Creek residents, um, that are coming along this corridor to be able to access, um, across this corridor. So just some history and timeline, um, just for the council update on this. So it's been a while, um, since we've, and new council members to be able to have the opportunity to discuss some timelines. So historically, this, this started in two thousand and ten with Gilbert. Um, it did start in two thousand with Maricopa County. They did a study years ago. Uh, but in, in Gilbert, it was identified in two thousand and ten. Um, picked it back up around two thousand and seventeen with an assessment that we presented and more so aesthetically of what this bridge could look like, uh, about the same time as the, the master plan for the park started getting established. So we were starting to gain ground and get a little bit more information. So fast forward to June twenty-twenty-one, this is kind of when we kicked the project off, um, for design phase. Um, November twenty-twenty-one, we, we are, funding was secured with our transportation, um, bond. And then January to August twenty-twenty-two, uh, the bridge aesthetic stakeholder and public engagement, um, was the core of the timeframe that we were starting to, to really be active in those things. Um, just the stars here represent the different touchpoints that we had with council. Um, so January, February twenty-twenty-two, town council aesthetics discussions happen. So basically, we started with twenty, twenty-eight different options of what this bridge could look like. Um, so we wanted to bring all this information to the council, um, provide any feedback that we've received, um, and, and continue moving forward with, uh, mostly the aesthetics. The bridge was kind of, okay, the bridge is what it is, but the aesthetics is the piece that we really needed some feedback to make sure we're heading in the right direction. Um, and then May of twenty-twenty-two, we had a study session with the town council, gave them an update, um, because we're continuing to evolving with all the different stakeholder meetings and moving forward with the different options. And then again, August twenty-twenty-two, we had another town council study session, um, again, just updating the council on our progress with the project, keeping them updated on where we, where we've been and where we're going. And then September twenty-two, we had the thirty percent design. And then kind of a really important date for us was November twenty-twenty-two. So we had a value engineering meeting at that time, be, okay, here's, here's where we're at with the budget. Here's where we're at with schedule. Uh, we had an opportunity to go through this workshop with all the major stakeholders in the Town of Gilbert, um, with the town manager's office. And we were able to actually dig deep into this with the contractor. It was a three-day workshop and really, uh, define and refine kind of where we were at, um, see where there was value within this project, if there was opportunities to, um, to be able to cut scope or add scope, whatever was deemed necessary from that meeting. And we'll kind of dive into that a little bit more, um, during the presentation. And then January twenty-twenty-four, we came back to the town council again with another, another study session, again, updating the council on where we've been and kind of where we're, where we're heading. And, um, continuing on to currently, I think the design was actually completed sometime in April- I think the design was actually completed sometime in April-ish. But here we are in June, coming to the council that the design is complete and ready to move on to the construction phase of the project. And our project goals, so we established this at the very beginning. It's kind of unique to a process that we typically follow in Gilbert. So we started, we call it a value analysis workshop. So the same, the same players were involved in that. So we brought them on very early and kind of came up with our project goals. So we wanted to understand all the different stakeholders, the owners, of what, what the project goals are. So during the entire design process, we're making decisions based off of these project goals. And as you can see, multimodal, we want to make sure there's different types of opportunity for transportation across this corridor, budget and schedule constraints. Iconic was the word that was given to us by management to make sure this isn't just an ordinary bridge. And so we want to make sure that it does have iconic, that this is a place of destination, not a place of just people going from point A to point B. Improve public safety and response times, we discussed that. Activate and enable a trail system. So we have the opportunity also with a future Gilbert Regional Park that will be underneath this bridge, we have opportunities to have more connectivity within our trail system within this corridor. We have a flood, flood plain underneath this. We have, I think, two different... We have the flood control, then also Queen Creek Wash. So we have restrictions that we have to maintain those flood areas. And so that's, it was an important goal to the team to make sure we, we keep that goal and keep, be able to maintain that ability for these to have the flood plains. Improve traffic safety and circulation in South Gilbert. Just want to continue that. And that's connectivity we talked about earlier to continue to be able to move through from Ocatillo to, from Greenfield to Higley. And then integration and access within Gilbert Regional Park. So this is a big piece that really turned with this project from being just a, just an ordinary bridge from point A to point B, that we have a future park that we now have to provide ingress, egress in for the future users of the park, especially special events, anybody that's been down to the park around the Fourth of July. There's hour waits to try to get out of there. So this is another connection point into Ocatillo Road to allow traffic to flow through here a little more fluidly. This is just as a theoretical to look at what the costs were when we started in 2021. So as you can see, this is an accurate number, 2021, it's fifty-four million dollars. So that's, that was before we got much of a, a design at that point. We just started, this is kind of a thought where this dollar number came from. And if we use the index here you see on the left, if we were to calculate that based off of what we've seen in the increase of that index, it'd be a hundred and three million dollars. So we were able to get under that, just pure off of, off of this index. But that's just an idea to show the council that just based off of the material index increase, that this bridge increased from fifty-four million to a hundred and three million, potentially using just the index alone. So part of that November 22nd that I said earlier, value engineering workshop, we were able to shave off approximately nine point five million off of the estimation from the contractor at that point. And so just some of these, some of these items you can see here on the right. The prefab pedestrian bridge was probably one of the really important parts. So was shortening the bridge, so I'll probably focus on those two a little bit. So the prefab, originally, the aesthetics was not structurally integrated into the bridge itself. So we looked at the cost that the aesthetics was going to cost, and it was way too high just for an aesthetics feature. And so we were able to separate that from the actual bridge itself and have a secondary, I guess you can say, bridge for the pedestrian access on both sides. And that was integrated structurally into the bridge. So not only was aesthetically, but it actually had some structural components to be able to not spend so much money just on aesthetics, but actually have something that it's improving. The second piece was shortening the park bridge. So there was a section through that value engineering workshop that just basically showed that there's kind of a, I shouldn't say useless space because it was a little long. But we talked with Parks and Rec about the future park. We said if we shorten this X amount of feet, we could save three point five million dollars. And is there value in us doing that? And it doesn't affect the usability of that space for the future? And they said, no, it doesn't affect that. And so we were able to shave off again another three point five million to that, based off of that meeting. And basically, what we're trying to convey is there was a lot of, there was a lot of back and forth on this. We'll go into a little more detail on future slides, but we hired a third-party estimator for at least the last 12 months. For thirty, sixty, ninety, we were going line item by line item and trying to see where there are savings that we can find. And so we understand this is a big number. And we've tried everything in our power to get this to a point that we feel comfortable and confident moving forward and bringing it tonight in front of the council. So just to dive in a little bit more details between the sixteen and hundred percent design. So we went from a hundred and four million cost estimate from last year to a hundred and twelve million. So just some of this change. So we had seven point five million, which is a seven point two percent increase from our sixty percent. And then part of that was scope refinement, which is six point six million, which is six point three. And I'll get back to that a little bit because there's a little, there's some information in there that's, that's, that's hard to share. So I'll try to do it, try to help understand that. Escalation is probably not quite the right word here, but there was nine hundred thousand for sub supplier pricing. And basically, what that is, during the sixty percent design, as a contractor, you're not going to get all your subs onboard at sixty percent design because it's going to cost money by doing that. And so we get what's called a plug number. We, we work with the subcontractor and just give them some information. We try to get a plug number that may be close to that. Sixty percent, it's really hard to do that. So basically, that plug number that came in, when the final, when we got closer to final plans and the contractor was able to establish subcontractors on this, that number came in, nine hundred thousand increase from the plug numbers that were in there in, from the last estimate. So just to try to understand that. And then the other piece is this, this six point six million. So this was scope refinement, so this wasn't in the sixty percent design. So if we want to talk about escalation or inflation, there's numbers built into that number. But it's hard to know what that is because we didn't have a number at the sixty percent for some of these items. So this was refining scope to understand some of the additional needs. As we further got into design, we understood we needed to take, to add some additional scope to this project. And again, some of these things on the, on to the right is soil remediation, the shade canopies, bridge foundations, we need to be a little deeper, and aesthetics lighting. So we put on here enhanced durability. So really, this, this is a robust lighting system to make sure it's not going to break. We went as far as meeting out in the field, taking a baseball bat and see if it would break. And so we want to make sure that these are going to be durable, they're going to last, and the maintenance is going to be less money in the future to be able to make sure that we don't have the vandalism problems and different things within this area. So that's where you're seeing some of the increase on the aesthetics lighting. And just a little bit more detail, this is more than a bridge. So it comes, it comes back to all these different elements that are part of this. From, there's two different, there's two different track, traffic signals. One is a hawk, a hawk crossing, and then one is a true traffic signal that'll be on the bridge. There's also Higley Road that we're doing some... It wasn't originally part of the scope on Higley Road that we started looking at and said, okay, if we build this beautiful bridge, we have all this access coming off the bridge, and Higley Road is two lanes northbound. So we want to make sure that we're fixing the potential issues in the future. So we refine the scope and put additional lanes heading northbound on Higley Road. So that created additional scope. Sixty-nine KV line relocation. So this is, if you want to say the word iconic, this is the first time SRP's ever allowed their facilities to go through a bridge. So this is, this is, it was quite, quite the chore to go through this process, and we're, we're still going through it. But that, that is a huge piece to this puzzle because we have this beautiful iconic bridge, and then you have these big sixty-nine KV poles going right through it. So we want to make sure that that wasn't an eyesore. So we decided, we don't want to go underground with them because if you go underground and something happens, you have to tear up the park. So the best option was to go through the bridge, and that was SRP's sub consultant that came up with that, that that was the best option to do. Anything else that I missed here? It really, I think the, the, the big piece that we need, I think the council would like to understand is we are, this bridge is preparatory for the park. So we are, we are building the access road out to a certain point. We're extending water lines, sewer lines, reclaimed lines, SRP lines. We're extending all these out. So when the future park does come in, they just connect to those points. They don't have to touch the bridge, they don't have to redo anything on the bridge. And we've been coordinating with the current designer on that, making sure we have all of our pieces together. And so again, this is, this is more than a bridge. So next steps, there is, again, two stars here. So June 2024, here we are today, GMP number two to proposing for the council to approve this, to move forward for, to construction. July, I'm sorry, sixty-nine KV relocation underway. So currently, SRP is onsite right now, removing some of these sixty-nine KV poles to get them out of the way to build the bridge. And that's important because SRP is committed to moving forward to hit our schedule so we can make sure that we, that they're, the facilities are out of our way, that we can actually start building the bridge. And what they're doing is basically just putting a temporary facilities up, out of the way of the bridge. And then we're going to be building the conduits and everything within the bridge. So then SRP will have the ability to pull wire through the bridge. July 18th, 2024, this will be the second, another touch point on this project. This will be our groundbreaking event. You should be getting some invitations, if you haven't already, for this, this event, to be able to have our groundbreaking. And then July 2026 is our tentative completion date. We're hoping to beat the Fourth of July to have this completed by that point. But again, we're hoping it'll be sooner than that, but that's kind of our tentative schedule. And then lastly, is just the project importance, is it's all about connections. So connections between our public safety and residents who call in their hour of need, connections between our community and their park, and connections from our community to neighboring communities. So with that, that is the end of the presentation.
Thanks, Ryan. Any comments, any questions, Councilmember Bon Giovanni?
Thank you, Mayor. So I've had people come up to me and ask me, why don't we just wait two years? Because everything should be cheaper in two years. Can you talk to us about that?
Absolutely. Yeah, so that's a great question. And what we've seen, we've met with a handful of contractors, not just on this project, but additional projects as well. We are estimating currently that it's between seven and ten percent of the escalation costs continue into FY, FY twenty-six. And so by pushing this out, we don't know what that number is going to be. But if you put seven point seven or ten percent on top of a hundred and twelve million and wait for a year or two, this could continue to rise and get more expensive. And so that is something we've looked at, we've kept track of through the entire project to see where this thing is heading. Unfortunately, we don't know what that future looks like. But we do have a future park that's coming in, and this bridge is a critical path for that park. And so that's why the timing and schedule is critical right now.
Thank you.
Thanks, Ryan. I know how critical it is for Gilbert Fire to be able to access the residents over there. That's one of the biggest issues that we've heard. And I actually know somebody that lives on Ocatillo on the north side, and they had an issue at their home. And Chandler Fire responded, and Gilbert Fire responded from someplace else. And she has a kangaroo or wallaby on her property. So there were pictures on social media, that's how I knew about it. But it's a perfect example of we built this great fire station right there to the east, and they can't access all of those residents to the west there on Ocatillo. And I know that people are concerned with the aesthetic. To build a bridge without it being, looking nice would cost us almost as much, right? We're getting this aesthetic, but it's going to be a focal point in this community. And especially when you're down there at Gilbert Regional Park, this is what you're going to see. And I envision families taking family photos down there. I envision prom kids going down to take prom photos and seniors taking their senior photos on this bridge. I, I look at like Tempe Town Lake and the bridge that they have that goes over Tempe Town Lake, which is beautiful facility. So we have to look past the fact that this is just a bridge for vehicles, which is going to access, provide so many access points to the park at the same time. And unfortunately, the longer we wait, the more it costs right now. And I don't think we're looking at anything coming down anytime soon. Councilmember Tilke?
Thank you, Mayor. Ryan, that was a great presentation. I really appreciate the time that you all put into that value engineering and the amount of money that you were saving, but also looking at the future in many of those items that you mentioned. So I wasn't going to need a presentation today, but I'm very happy that you did that and that the public got to hear it. So thank you, Councilman Torgerson, for asking for that.
Councilmember Torgerson?
I appreciate the time you took with me earlier in the week because it is a larger scope than what I previously interpreted it to be. And to see the value engineering involved in there, everything else is... Unfortunately, we're in a time where the costs of bringing construction to fruition have increased so dramatically. Whether it be building a, you can build a small school somewhere and you're paying three hundred and sixty dollars a square foot where five years ago it was two hundred dollars. Having to swallow the hard pill of, of construction inflation and seeing, I believe you said it was seven point seven percent is, is expected for next year?
Yeah, so that was, that was, that was on this particular project that we received, but we received other areas from five to over ten percent.
Well, thank you for taking the time because I know it took a long time to put this together and to, to deal with me for, for a while the other day. So thank you.
No, we appreciate it. We've been putting this together for about three years. So we appreciate this opportunity.
Vice Mayor?
Ryan, thank you. Will this have any impact on other projects in our CIP?
So there, there is, from the, from the 2022 Geo Bonds perspective, all of the money has been allocated, clear out, so I believe FY, Kelly was here, FY twenty-six, I believe, or twenty-seven. So all the projects have been allocated. So we did have to move two additional projects out to future years to be able to have the contingency funds that's requested tonight. And so that's, we added a little extra just in case for future as well. I believe those, those projects came out to around twenty-two million that we, we moved to outer years. So we were able to utilize twelve million that was tonight on another project as well. So we still have a saving, I shouldn't say savings, but we have the opportunity for another contingency request if needed that we don't have to move another project out unless it exceeds that amount.
Can you tell me what those two projects are?
Oh, you're going to use my brain here. So one, one project was the Pecos Road from Val Vista to Lindsay. And that's reconstruction of the roadway within that corridor. So I drove the corridor, we looked at it, and it's aging, but at the same time, I feel confident that that could be pushed out to a later date. And then the other one was, I'm trying to remember, safety around schools, and I know that sounds horrible. But that was pushed out because we're still contemplating a grant within these areas. We put together a study and assessment. And it's been, and that money's been in there for several years while we still look at opportunities for this. And so we don't see, in talking to traffic engineering, we don't see a hu, a huge need currently at these locations to try to push this forward sooner than later. And so this was another project that we were able to, to push out in outer years.
Thank you.
Councilmember Buckley?
I just wanted to say thank you for the presentation. I, I've been following this bridge since you probably started about three years ago and definitely followed it through my campaign. And I'm excited, I'm really excited to see this. And I live two miles away from where this bridge is going to be. And so I think, and I agree with the mayor that I think it's, it's going to be a beautiful centerpiece or focal point for all the residents and for the town. So thank you guys very much.
You're welcome.
Thank you for the presentation. Oh, Councilmember Bon Giovanni?
Thank you. I'm just hoping that in the year 2034, on July 4th, when we're watching the fireworks and I'm walking across this bridge and telling my grandson, which I don't have yet, to say, you know, we only built this thing for a hundred and twelve million when it would cost two hundred and fifty million today. So I'm, I'm, I'm banking on you guys because I don't want to have a different conversation with him.
Agreed.
I think that's exactly what you will be saying. Yeah, unfortunately, and having, coming from Transportation Policy Committee today, that's what we're talking about, especially when it comes to roadways, right? The inflation of everything. I just wanted to clarify one thing. We have a hold on our calendar for July 16th, not the 18th. So let's get that cleared up, okay?
All right, so yeah, I'll be with our... All right. So yeah, I'll be with our communication specialist. He helped put this together.
Thank you. I just thought, since it was on the screen, I better clarify that.
So I apologize. Yes, the 16, sorry.
My calendar goes nuts sometimes. So thank you for that, and great presentation. And I also want to point out that we wouldn't technically talk about this typically, but I'm going to throw out there that I was also able to get $7 million from the state legislature in 2021 for this bridge. And we don't talk about that often, but since we've been talking about the 27 million that we got for the wells, I thought I would just throw that out there, too. And I know that the inflation has gone crazy with this. So thanks, Ryan. Appreciate it. We'll bring it back to the council for discussion or motion.
Mayor, I'll make a motion to approve item 24 AMV.
I have a motion by Councilmember Tilk, seconded by Councilmember Buckley. Please Motion passes 6-0. Congratulations, team. Long time coming. We look forward to July 16 or 18, whatever it is. And I was wrong. It was $8 million from the state legislature in 2021. So just going to throw that out there. Thank you. Vice Mayor, next.
Item 25C, Councilmember Torgerson.
Actually, I was given some information that answered my question, so I have no further question on it.
Do I can make a motion on it?
Make a motion to accept 25C.
I have a motion?
I'll second it.
I have a motion by Councilmember Torgerson, seconded by Councilmember Bon Jivani. Please Motion passes 6-0. Vice Mayor, is that it?
I believe that completes the consent calendar, Mayor.
Excellent. Now we have administrative items. Items are for council discussion and action. Number 37, council administration considered adoption of the town of Gilbert's Parks Recreation Master Plan for the years of 2024 to 2034. Does anybody require a presentation on this? Does anyone have questions of staff on this?
My question is if Scott had his issue dealt with to your satisfaction on this.
I was going to make that comment, that I thought they did a great job addressing my concerns.
Okay, so a vice mayor had some concerns during our study session on this topic, and they've been addressed by staff. And so we're thanking staff for taking care of that. Would anybody like to make a motion? Parks liaison, would you like to make a motion?
Sure. I'd like a motion that we approve item 37, the adoption of the town of Gilbert Parks Recreation Master Plan for the years of 2024 to 2034.
I second that.
A motion by Councilmember Bon Jivani, seconded by Councilmember Buckley. Please vote. Oh, hold on, it needs to be activated for us, Chevelli. Thank you, Chevelli. Motion passes 7-0. Congratulations, Parks team. Sorry, 6-0, sorry, force of habit. 6-0, congratulations, Parks team. And I see this is our, one of our Parks Master Plan, and I thank you for sitting through this meeting. And I saw you over there a little while ago. I meant to say hello, but it's been kind of a crazy evening. Thank you for being here this evening. We appreciate it. Moving on to item number 38, council administration discussion and update from the Community Engagement Task Force. Councilmember Tilk?
Thank you, Mayor. I'd like to thank Melanie for being here, in case you have some questions I can't answer, and for staying this late. So thank you, Melanie. Just as a quick update, we met with the task force and advisory members on Monday, June 10. We've got a great group representing our community. Their expertise is going to enhance the recommendations to this council. Not a lot to report at this meeting, because we used our June meeting to take care of all the formalities, and open meeting laws, all those things that they need to be brought up to speed with. Wanted to send a shout out and thank you to Wendy from our people team for her predictive index exercise, which was interactive and allowed us to get to know one another and the strengths that we're going to be bringing to the team and the group discussions. We're current, we are gathering information from the group on topics they would like to pursue for upcoming meetings. They were very excited to know that they're going to see the results from the teen survey and from hearing from our council and school liaisons in the future. I'm also really pleased to just report that our teen representatives were very engaging during the entire meeting. And so I was really proud of them, because, not that open meeting law isn't exciting to learn about, but they were there the whole time, got through it. Our next meeting is August 12, at 5:00 PM in the Heritage Room, which is room 300 here. I just wanted to announce, it will be on our website if it isn't already, but we had to change two of the dates due to fall break. So we moved that meeting to October 21, and Veterans Day moved to November 4. So with that, that's my report.
Thank you. Thank you, Councilmember. The only thing that I wanted to ask was, we had a couple members that weren't able to attend June. How did we handle that?
We had one, one of those was able to call in. And so I think we still have two. Melanie is going to follow up with them and make sure that they have all of the information. The good news is every one of those appointed were, had already taken their open meeting online training before we got there. So she will follow up and make sure that they have all that information.
Thank you. It was just something that we weren't able to cover following the interviews. Any other questions, comments on CETF? Great. Moving on, Vice Mayor Communications.
Thank you, Mayor. In the interest of time, I'm going to abbreviate this. The Gilbert Town Council values citizen comments and input. Anyone wishing to speak before the council must fill out a request to speak card for each item that they wish to speak on and submit it to the town clerk or place it in the bin provided prior to the start of the meeting. The communications from citizens portion on the agenda provides citizens an opportunity to identify for the town council matters of interest or concern related to town government. Under the provisions of the Arizona Open Meeting Law, the town council is prohibited from responding to issues that have not been properly noticed. While we understand and appreciate the passion our community members bring to these sessions, we must remind everyone that clapping during the meeting is not acceptable. This practice can disrupt the flow of discussion, potentially intimidate others, and detract from the respectful atmosphere we strive to maintain. The town asks that when your name is called, you come forward to the podium, state your name and your address and your city of residence, and then begin speaking. You'll have three minutes, unless you've contributed time to someone else. Our first speaker tonight, Doralee, did you want to speak again?
Good evening, once again, Mayor, Vice Mayor, and councilmembers. I appreciate your time here today, and I hope that tonight you'll serve some giblets, or whatever that was that we talked about. So the reason why I'm here is regarding DR 2437, the lumberyard project. The rezone was approved by council in May 2024. I did not attend many of the community meetings because, or the redevelopment, or the planning meetings, because I thought it would not impact me in my neighborhood. It was on Neely's side. I'm on the other side, about 400 feet away. However, I was wrong. I do not understand why the developer would be placed on the council agenda when the development doesn't meet the fire code requirements. I understand it was, whoa, not the final plat. So then I wondered, why in the world would this developer give the town $50,000 for mitigation for traffic? I was like, Mayor, it's unheard of. I'm like, what is going on? Well, when I saw the packet for the redevelopment commission, and I saw what was going on, that the developer needs a secondary emergency access, and now what's being planned, and I don't know for sure if it's being planned or talked about, is it is going to require an easement that the town will be providing, if they are providing it, to the developer under whatever circumstances. And then it would take it out to Phoenix Avenue, and that's where I come in. Phoenix Avenue, the plot is Lacy Track in 1917, oldest neighborhood, Gilbert, one of them. The plot was, the plat was for Phoenix Avenue. It was dedicated for the public, right, at that time. It wasn't dedicated for a developer. So I asked why. Why would this secondary access not be included in any of the study sessions regarding the design? I don't know. I'm very disturbed about that, because Phoenix Avenue has been a road dedicated for over 100 years. It's never been improved. It's leading into my neighborhood. If this happens, and I know it's just an emergency access, but it's not. It is ladder trucks. We have enough things going in our neighborhood. We have district lofts, Page Commons, senior center, multifamily housing, you name it. District lofts. Dang it, I missed it. Anyway, I will close if I can, and I would hope that the council look into this, because I believe that it is a disservice to the public, and I wish, and I respectfully ask, that it be looked at, because I think the town, the residents of Gilbert, the taxpayers, are not to supplement a developer. They need to widen the lot, whatever they can do. Thank you.
Thank you, Doralee. So I think it'd be appropriate if staff could contact Doralee and talk about that project. Next up is Kristen Landry. You need to push the button on the microphone there, at the bottom of the base of the microphone.
Thank you. Thank you. Okay, so I'm Kristen Landry. This is my son, Colter. You have heard my son speak before, but I have a communication disability, a very complex communication disability. Typically, people don't know what that is. Sometimes firemen know because of strokes, and it, medical people know. So I requested, sorry, we live under address, we live under the address confidentially program, because we are survivors of domestic violence. I requested from the town yesterday, ADA accommodations so that we could speak out, and it was denied. In 10 years, since I had brain surgery, I've never been given ADA accommodation. 10 years. In 10 years, without the ability to communicate, I cannot ask access.
Access.
Thank you. I cannot access justice while we were fighting to survive pervasive I have requested multiple times to meet with the chief of police, with an interpreter, using my ADA civil rights. I have been ignored. Lauren Ramirez, if I said her name correctly, was the last judge I met in front of, and she did not give me my ADA rights. I was trying to seek an order of protection. I have met with the MAG, Domestic Violence Chair. I'm looking, because I know you are part of that, and have explained how difficult it is as a person with communication disability and domestic violence and a resident of Gilbert. I have also spoken to Maricopa County Victims Rights. I have also spoken to the AG's office. Today, I spoke with the Maricopa County Prosecutor's Office, saying, because there is a hearing I need to attend to protect us. And I'm repeating myself over and over and over, and trying to explain every step that we have tried, what we have, what step I've the hurdle that I've overcome. And fingers are pointed, and someone else is going to take action. My son, as people know from the council, was assaulted for three years in school. Did anyone help me to advocate for my son? I am his voice, and I am his advocate, but I need my own voice to protect him. I am requesting that the town of Gilbert follow ADA law, respect people with disabilities, and have a meeting with me regarding the struggles and the possible assist people with disabilities more effectively. Thank you. Do you want to speak?
Thank you. Anne Dusette?
Hi, my name is Anne Dusette. I'm not going to disclose my address, because I don't want my trash can to be inspected again. It's amazing how wasteful taxpayer money can be used for. Mayor, city council members, for the past seven months, I've attended these meetings regularly. Just like many other residents of Gilbert, for most of us, city council meetings aren't a top priority, unless they're some sort of special occasion, like a child receiving a citizenship award or something to that effect. For me, it's mostly been showing up at this building to pick up my Christmas ornament at the end of the year. That's the only reason I've attended, been to this building. Over the past seven months, I've spoken at some meetings and simply observed others. I've noticed a concerning trend. The me- The meetings have become increasingly longer and the quality of the discussions have deteriorated. Early on, there seemed to be some sort of cohesion or efficiency, but now I see a council just struggling for the basic skills of communication. I've witnessed agenda items being discussed in such a convoluted manner that it often requires scheduling an additional meeting just to talk about the previous meeting. I recently saw my first executive session, which was interesting. It's puzzling to watch prolonged discussions in the meeting, only for you to disappear behind some magical curtain for who knows what conversation goes on behind there. What's most troubling, though, is the pride and egos that stand out. There are dedicated citizens who come every two weeks to inform you about real life issues affecting our community, sharing personal experiences and their concerns. Initially, citizens' comments were placed at the beginning of the meeting, and now they are at the end. It feels like a tactic to discourage participation and hoping people will just simply leave out of frustration so you don't have to hear it. Last meeting, we waited two and a half hours to speak, and now we're up to three hours. Public speaking is difficult for many, yet some of us are willing to speak out and fight for a greater cause. In conclusion, I urge the council to consider the needs of the voices of the residents more seriously. Efficient and respective communication, streamlined meetings, and prioritize citizen comments could greatly enhance the quality of these sessions. We come here because we care about our community, and we hope that you do too. Thanks for letting me share.
Thank you. Carissa Arnold, who has received time from Jessica McGinley, so you have six minutes.
Good evening. Thank you for your time tonight. At the end of the last meeting, it was stated that the, I had spoke about the officers that were standing in the large group when I had gone down to eat dinner, and it was stated that the officers were probably at the garage. They weren't actually near the garage. They were an entire block away, and they were standing in a straight line in a dark parking lot. And so I just wanted to make sure that that got clarified, that the statements that I made about what was going on was truthful and nothing else. We have been asking for paid parking with the ability to validate parking for people patronizing businesses in downtown. Sorry, one second here. The top portion of the garage can be used solely for employee parking for restaurants down there and to keep it, to prevent it from being used as a hangout. There can be limits on garage access by allowing the garage to close or not accept any more vehicles past a certain time. Signs can be posted for foot traffic altering, alerting them to closures. Let's remember that a 19-year-old fell off the top of the garage and died, and it was, it was there on a Monday night at 11 o'clock at night, and this was not during peak hours, which is when you guys are discussing having the security down there. Our group has asked for suicide nets as well. It's a known issue from your officers that both minors and adults walk on the ledge of the garage. It will only be a matter of time before someone else falls again. I've read social media posts, social media statements from community members who live close to the garages. They've talked about how bad the noise is from the cars, trucks, and motorcycles as they rev up their engines going up and down. One homeowner stated that he even thought that this was a normal thing. He had become so used to it, he didn't realize that this shouldn't be happening. All of these issues got brought to light because we, as a group of Citizens Patrol, took initiative to go visit the garages. We took the initiative to figure out what was going on. In fact, a news report came out yesterday where the city finally confirmed the drug use, underage drinking, et cetera. If it wasn't for us, the garages would still be functioning on the same level that they were six to eight weeks ago. If it wasn't for us doing the city's job, kids would still be doing drugs and drinking freely in the garages. This only brought, got brought out because a few of your community cared enough about their teens to actually go do something about it. Meanwhile, as we are bringing these issues to you, we repeatedly heard statements and excuses about why this wasn't an issue. Now, in recent days, it is being said to the media that you know that this has been an issue for a while, for almost two years, and you guys are working to protect the teens. If it wasn't for our group, the city would have repeatedly tried to hide the issues behind the teen violence and what is going on in the garages. The security officers that are currently going in are only going to provide limited resources for that garage. The bike officers can only do so much. The cameras, unless they're monitored 24 hours a day, are not going to be able to fully investigate and realize, see what is actually going on down there. I want to play this video for you so you can see. This was just posted to social media two weeks ago. Sorry, it deleted. Let me move it back over here. So you can see what perspective the community has.
Oh, shit. Look at that.
So-
Don't sound good.
I can see that one on face.
So this is a video of what appears to be a 12-year-old kid on a dirt bike, riding underneath the lights, popping a willy, and as he exits out, he goes, I, as, basically as I run, let me read it off here. "Once they see that I run, they won't chase me." This has become the community perspective in many social media posts that they can do whatever they want because as a city, they know that they can get away with doing it. This is a 12-year-old. Now, this was in, the episode from Dr. Phil was issued today, and here's a statement from-
Drinking and smoking.
-a criminal informant.
Parking lot, that fast food place in front of cops drinking and smoking. Granted, the cops didn't do anything. Either the cops don't care, or the cops are, I think, being paid off. They were doing some serious, like, heinous acts in front of these cops. Like, they'd be walking around with their brass knuckles out, and like, you could see, like, their gun poking out of their shirt, and like, the cops wouldn't do anything.
So this all comes back down to you guys as a city council. The video, sorry. Gilbert is the only city in Arizona where kids and young adults are brazen enough to post videos about how they can get away with doing whatever they want because the police won't chase them. Council, that comes from you. You have the say over your community, how your community is managed. You have the say over how your officers function and what they allow people to do and get away with. There is so little respect for your officers that community posts videos on it. That's not okay. Your officers should be having the respect that they deserve. The goons had several videos like this. This falls on you, and you cannot run a city and say there isn't a crime problem with the social media posts going on. We are asking for full transparency and accountability. We are asking for an internal investigation. And then finally, we are asking that you allow your employees to start speaking again. They used to speak freely at town council meetings about issues going on in their departments, and that has disappeared. They fear that they are in jeopardy of their jobs if they speak out. When employees are silenced, so are the problems. Give them the chance to be open and communicate with you as a council and work to give the city better footage to create a more unified community.
Thank you. Bridget Vega. Bridget, you've got time donated by Scott Myers, so you have six minutes.
There should be another one donated.
You only get one.
All right, then we're going to make this quick. Good evening, mayor, council. It's so refreshing to see after- Wait, timeout. Can we use that other three minutes and donate it to Ann then? Because they didn't tell us that when we did the meeting, or when we registered.
I don't have another card for it.
Well, my other three minutes, can I then donate that to Ann to finish off so we can use the minute? There should be another one from Jo-
Who's Scott Myers?
From Joel.
Who's Scott Myers?
That's right there.
Then your three minutes went to you, which is six minutes.
Correct. Then there should be one more from Joel. And if there's only, if you can only take one donation, then I would like to donate my additional, the Joels to Ann.
Three minutes for you and three minutes for Ann?
Correct. There should be one more from Joel, that, so mine total should have been nine. We can only use one for me, then I would like to give that three minutes to Ann.
Good evening, mayor and council.
Six minutes.
It was so refreshing to see after months of gaslighting the victims and community, your assistant chief on the news finally admitting underage drinking, illegal drugs, and violent behavior in the parking garage at Heritage District. Banger, we ask for you to take immediate action to address the safety and fix the elevator on 70 West Vaughn downtown garage. Fix the lights unless the cameras have night vision in there. Plus, if we can fix the ceiling and the shaking elevator so it can operate normal again. Next, we ask that you take immediate action on the garages by enforcing officers who are designated to be in that area. Run IDs until people get, until people get cited, we don't, we will not see change. As a community, we want an external investigation. Mayor, council chief, banger, you don't get to look the other way on this issue. Innocent children have died and have been brutally assaulted on your guys' watch. Reports show that Gilbert PD has evidence of Gilbert goons attacks long before Preston was killed. Had everyone done their jobs, Connor Jarnigan, Tristan Keener, and so many others wouldn't have been assaulted, and Preston Lord would be alive today. Gilbert, you have blood on your hands. We demand transparency and accountability. We need you as leadership to step up and be proactive. Instead of you, instead, you guys continue to perpetuate and inflict harm on the community. Thank you to the Citizens Patrol as the community has been present throughout the past couple months at the garages. As stated on the news, police are now keeping a close eye on the parking garage in downtown Gilbert. Personally, would like to say based off of our experience, we got tired of being gaslit and private conversations, so we brought it to the public as it was falling on deaf ears. In April, we filed a complaint on two units, and that's what pushed a lot of the conversation forward. I would like to play a clip, actually, I'll play, I would like to play a clip from an encounter, but due to lack of time, I'd rather play the Dr. Phil one. Tragically, we had spoken to officers and said, what are you going to do? Wait until somebody else dies, or suicide is committed, or another assault happens? Again, due to lack of action, based off of you guys, a 19-year-old fell off the rooftop. As you continue to turn a blind eye and continue negligence and lack of action by the town of Gilbert and Gilbert PD, another mother and family had to bury their son. He was loved, he loved video games and sports. He was outgoing, and he also was the kind of person that would do a lot for you and ask nothing in return. Arcandolences and prayers go out to the family. Please know you're not alone. We're here for you. Rise up, Gilbert. Please make sure to visit drphil.com to watch the primetime as the town of Gilbert, teen violence, and the Gilbert goons are on the latest episode. I'd like to play a clip. Maybe if we can get it to-
Being investigated, and trust me, I have a big platform and a bright light, and a lot of people are going to be paying very close attention to this. Very close attention to this. And I'm like a bad rash. I don't go away.
I want to say one thing, that a lot of people don't think that there's a way out. Don't let your fear override that decision because in the end, you're going to, you can be old man, and you're going to want out anyway. I wish I would have got out many years before I got out, and so many things would have been different.
Yeah. So parents, sometimes we have to parent, sometimes we have to reparent. It's never too late. And if you haven't done what you need to do until now, do it now. Do it now. Save your kid now. Don't let this continue because it's getting ready to get real hot, real hot in Gilbert, Arizona. I want to thank Lonny Coombs and-
So I still have a minute, so let me go back, and I'm going to play the one I wanted to share previously with the parking garage.
Can I ask you a quick question? What was your name? Roger? How come none of these people got in trouble? You know, half of them are drinking?
We're kicking them all out.
That's all I ask. This is a violation of the ARS code.
Okay.
It's posted. How come none of them were? After the video of the person that was walking across the edge right there, and after all the fights and goons, why did not one person, you guys, stop after we literally told you guys they were drinking? Because we watched them.
So you're aware that we don't have officers down or doing anything else, right?
You have kids up here drinking.
All right, and we have officers down at the bottom of the garage waiting for them to do other stuff.
But that's all I ask. Why did not any of these people get kicked? Just pass it.
Because we can't do that.
But your ARS-
I get what it says.
I have a, I have an honest question.
Yes.
How hard is it for Gilbert PD, especially with everything going on in the East Valley and after a kid was murdered and multiple assaults? How hard is it for Gilbert PD to move one of those three vehicles that, literally three Gilbert police cars downstairs on the first level? How hard is it to put one up here and station someone up here? They send you guys on bike cops. Why can't we get an officer up here to avoid any of this situation? So I ask that you guys, actually, you wait till another kid is assaulted or murdered. So I ask that you guys look into internal affairs, and that is clearly all the evidence has been turned over and reported. So I'll turn my other three minutes to Ann. Thank you.
There wasn't three minutes. You've had six minutes.
There are nine total.
No, there's not nine total. You had six minutes. Then Joel should give that. You get a total of six minutes.
Again, you said we can only use one, and before I started, you said the other three minutes I can give to Ann.
If Joel wants to speak, if Joel wants to speak, she can speak.
Joel donated the time to me as clearly all not-
We can't donate nine minutes. Six minutes total was it.
Now, we'll just bring it to two weeks. This is ridiculous. You had it sitting there for all of it.
Thank you. Dawn Edwards, whose time was also donated from Crystal, so Dawn, you have six minutes.
Before I start, I just wanted to, the lady over there was Johnny on the spot. She grabbed that one lady before her knees hit the thing and everybody looked, so they did a great job over there, just wanted to let you know. Good evening, Madam Mayor, Mr. Vice Mayor, esteemed council members. My name's Dawn Edwards. I was forced to retire from the fire department after I was retaliated against for filing a complaint against my supervisor. I'm here tonight to continue to shine a light on the people currently in charge of the fire department, the culture they are fostering, and why the morale in that department is at an all-time low. Most of us would prefer to follow a leader than work for a manager. There are many ways to differentiate between the two, but tonight I'll focus on one that always stood out for me. For me, it was always correlated to how much somebody uses policy as a crutch. It was always obvious to me when supervisors were uncomfortable in their position, they were the ones who fell back on policy because they were afraid or unable to make decisions for themselves. Shortly after I was promoted to captain in January of 2006, I attended a captain's meeting by our then-fire chief, Chief DeWitt. I don't remember the exact reason that this comment came up, but it always stuck with me when Chief DeWitt said, "Policies are guidelines that help us to do our job serving Mr. and Mrs. Smith. As long as you don't break the law and nobody gets hurt, everything else is a conversation." The best people that I had the opportunity to work for or alongside understood what that statement meant. They were leaders. Conversely, the worst people I ever worked for simply managed by, "Policy says so, so this is how we're going to do things." One of the former members, who has also chosen to speak out about the department, brought up an example of Assistant Fire Chief Bob Badgett coming in from home to send a captain home for restocking masks during a pandemic. During that pandemic, which just happened to be the most potent leadership challenge in all of our lifetimes, membership was left leaderless as all the top brass was working from home. In the words of our last fire chief, "Thank God we have good captains. They got us through this." The problem that has plagued the Gilbert Fire Department for as long as I could think of is the lack of leadership at the chief officer positions. The entire first group of chief officers, including most of the B.C.s, were rural metro leftovers. They went on to mentor the next group, who then mentored the current crop of managers. There's a reason why the high watermark of the Gilbert Fire Department was under Chief Colin DeWitt. He came from the outside, and he understood leadership is more than just managing people. There are multiple reasons for the low morale in the department. There are multiple reasons for the low morale in the department currently, but I think if you boiled most of them down to their base constituent parts, you'll find that the lack of leadership is a leading cause. I'm gonna be fast this time. As always, I thank you for the opportunity to speak, and I ask that you reach out and talk to your firefighters. They deserve better than the current batch of managers they have. They deserve the leadership to help them serve the community in the best way that they know how. Thank you again. See you in two weeks. Great job. What's that?
So, next up is Steve Laval. And it says, Steve, that you received donated time, but yours is the only name on there. I'm assuming it's from your wife? Okay. Yeah, yeah.
Good evening, Council. Um, I just want to start off real quick, talk about a promotional process that occurred about a year ago inside the fire department. It was for the captain, and in that process, they did what they called a peer evaluation. They called it a 360 feedback. But they said that they're not gonna use the information to evaluate the candidates, but that the candidates themselves were supposed to, uh, I guess, address that and talk about their 360 feedback as part of their promotional process. I bring that up because, uh, well, I believe you guys were involved in the hiring of the fire chief that he was just talking about. And I believe the peer evaluations he received prior to that hiring process were pretty poor. I think 80% of the, probably the fire department absolutely asked you to go outside the department because we didn't have leadership inside the department. But you guys continued to listen to that guy, who hasn't shown any leadership either. He picks people who just say yes to him and just do what he wants. They're puppets. Okay? So the real director or the real leader of your public safety right now is Leah Reinheimer. She's in charge of it. She should be the chief. She's over the Police Department and the Fire Department. And your, uh, public safety departments are, quite frankly, a mess. So you might want to think about exactly what's going on at the leadership level from that man's seat, from Leah Reinheimer's seat, and from your public safety seats to kind of clean this mess up. Which leads me to a couple of other things. Councilmember Torkelson, you've mentioned transparency a couple of times tonight. So with that, I wrote down some notes. Um, Mayor, you've had a pre-written statement the last two times. I'm sure we're gonna hear it again tonight. It talks about you saying you're concerned over the potential damage to Gilbert. Were you so concerned when, uh, what was it? Uh, Mr. Riff, I believe, was his name? And his Second Amendment right, or excuse me, his First Amendment rights were violated? Were you concerned about the reputation of Gilbert at that point? Second, I have to say is that, uh, you keep saying that we highlight allegations, opinions, and false claims. First, you continue to talk about the Pierce-Coleman report as a third-party process or a third-party independent evaluation. And you keep saying that they have done an investigation and have found no findings. Yet you don't show me any facts. You don't provide it back-up paperwork. I've provided you documentation. I have documentation and proof of what I say. I ask that you present the same. As a matter of fact, I ask all of council, in that report, it says that there's 500 pages in that report. That's the, that's the evaluation. That's what they looked at. 500 pages. Make them public. Post them. You put a QR code up for the 16-page report. Put all the 500 pages up. Let the public see it. Let them see what's written. Let them read it. Let them be the judge. Let them decide if it's a fake or if it's a real investigation. I have another question about that. Has anybody asked that company how many people from the fire department they interviewed? I know what the answer is. They didn't interview anybody in all of that process because they would have found out some truths. So that report does not get, does not, does not protect the town. I hate to tell you that. You're not owning up to it. You're not speaking truth. And it's not gonna go away until you do. Had that man just apologized years ago? Come out publicly and said, hey, I'm sorry. We screwed up. We will never do it again? We wouldn't be here today. But you have to own what you do. Leads me to one more thing here. Currently, there are three members, actually, maybe two more things. Currently, there are three members in that fire department on paid administrative leave over some stuff that I'm not gonna really talk about right now because I don't have all the facts to that, and I like to come with facts. But I do know one thing. Those three men report up to a chief who surely signed off on what they did. And I do mean surely because I can't believe that they would have shut down an entire, uh, training center on a Sunday without a chief approval. But that chief goes to work every day. There's not a chief in this organization that's on paid administrative leave, but there's three individuals, two captains and an engineer, that are, as you do your investigation. Okay? Why is it only held at the street level? Why are, uh, management, uh, in this organization never held accountable? Why are they not on paid administrative leave? Uh, last, I'll leave it with this. Uh, transparency. Transparency is a big part of what you talked about tonight. We do not have transparency in this organization. We don't. I've been part of it for a long time. And I could go on about other hirings and other things. And frankly, I might have to. I might have to keep coming back and staying up till 10:00 or 11:00 until we get action. I asked you guys a long time ago. I said, you guys said it. You said you are the, uh, you are the board. You're the executive board. He's the CEO. The executive board holds the CEO accountable. The executive board can fire the C.E.O. That's the truth. You can hold him accountable to whatever level you deem. But right now, your organization has zero leadership. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Colter Landry? You'd like to donate your time?
No, she said another speaker already presented what he was going to do.
Okay. Thank you. That concludes the Communications here.
Thanks, Vice Mayor. Would anyone like to make any comments? I'm gonna ask. Any comments following communications from citizens? Since we're only allowed to respond to criticism, I, I am gonna read my statement again. And I'm gonna keep reading my statement. Speakers continue to utilize the one-way citizen comment section of Town Council meetings to share their opinions regarding the Office of Digital Government and Town Leadership. Continuing to highlight claims that were thoroughly investigated internally then externally by a third-party investigator who found the accusations had no merit. I am concerned with the potential damage done to Gilbert's name, heart, and town organization by these continued efforts of a few to highlight allegations, opinions, and false claims. The spoken word has the capacity to inflict damage. This community is facing many pressing issues. I respect and welcome any and all efforts and energies that work to bring, uh, to bringing us together as a community, not those that divide us. Any that moves us forward in a positive manner. Any that honor the town's small-town roots we all know and love. Those neighborly attitudes that were the very reason many of us moved to Gilbert, I challenge us to be better humans to each other. We will move on to... Yes, Councilmember Hertzmann.
I didn't think you were gonna present that again, but I wanted to make a point that I don't think that represents my point of view because, uh, I brought forward part of that Coleman-Pierce-whatever investigation in a video that I know some people that voted to accept that had never seen. And I didn't find it to be a joke. I didn't find it to be something to be dismissed. I found it highly inflammatory. So I, I, I have to respectfully disagree with what you say. I was not on council at the time, but I am the only one that dug deep enough to watch that video. And I am personally offended by it on every single level. So I just want to make it clear that I don't agree with you on that point.
Thank you. Appreciate your comments. I don't believe we ever voted on that, but we can't get into a discussion on that here. We're not allowed to. Communication, excuse me, future meetings. Council may discuss whether to place an item on a future agenda but may not discuss the merits of the item. Study session related to meet and confer requested by Vice Mayor Anderson, Councilmember Bon Giovanni, and Councilmember Buckley will be on a future agenda, study session agenda. Communications from, the report from the town manager.
Mayor, I'm sorry. I had a future agenda item.
Sorry, I'm sorry.
That's okay. I was wondering if, um, we could receive an update on the 2022 Geo Bonds at our retreat. I think we've had several, um, references to it in some of our projects, and I don't know if it was already on the agenda, but I would like to hear a little bit more about our status on that. Thank you.
Thank you. Communications report from the town manager.
Thank you, Mayor. Members of the council, a couple of items tonight. First, I want to recognize our water conservation team here at Gilbert. The, they received a shout-out at the University of Colorado Boulder's Conference on the Colorado River on June 7th during a session on reshaping cities to be smart water by the Alliance of Water Efficiency Director of Programs. Conference included panels from all of the voices on the river, Mexico, the Upper Basin States, Lower Basin States, tribes, academics, environmental groups, and recreation. The recognition was for the success of our continuous consumption program that notifies customers of potential leaks at the residence or business based on AMI meter data. It's outstanding and received recognition in front of this audience, given that Arizona historically doesn't get in the spotlight for conservation when it comes to the Colorado River. And then, second, we want to thank Lieutenant Mondragon, who has announced his upcoming retirement. He's probably someone all of you personally know. If you don't personally know him, I'm sure you've heard his name. He has been a longtime leader for us. He began his service with Gilbert PD in October 1996. As an officer, he served in patrol, field training, and he was a member of Gilbert's first full-time bike team who worked to pave, to pave the way for Gilbert's growth in the Heritage District. Mondragon served as a detective in the Property Crimes Unit and the Persons Crimes Unit until he was promoted to the rank of sergeant. As a sergeant, he served on various patrol teams and then moved to the Enforcement Support Unit, where he proposed the Unified Detention Program with Chandler PD. 2014, Mondragon was promoted to the rank of lieutenant, where he served in patrol investigations and is completing his career as the administrative support lieutenant. We wish Lieutenant Mondragon the best of luck in his retirement and gratitude for all of the years of service to this community. That's all I have tonight.
Thank you, Patrick. Um, I did a ride-along with Lieutenant Mondragon several years ago. Great guy. Congratulations on the retirement, Lieutenant. Communications report from the council?
I have one.
Yes, Councilmember Buckley?
This will probably be short and quick. I guess I have to move my, my mic a little closer. So this is the extension of economic development and tourism again. And Dan's killing me here because what we're gonna say today is, May 23rd, Air France began service from Paris to Phoenix Sky Harbor International Airport. So Gilbert was featured at a recent Paris Trade and Media Reception through an opportunity with Arizona Office of Tourism showcasing Gilbert's best attractions to over 50 international trade and media professionals. Should you want to, um, additional information on the above or wish to chat about Gilbert tourism, please call Dan at 480-720-8779. So we now have flights to London and Paris. And all, all of, hopefully, in all sincerity here, is that all of the tourism and the people flying into the Phoenix and Gilbert area could be, you know, great economic impact for us. So that's it for me.
Thank you. Councilmember Bon Giovanni?
Hey, it's Parks Direct time. Let's talk about the happenings for next week's, for next week's council meeting. Senior prom for ages 55-plus. Rocky, you just called me a senior. Uh, step into the time machine and groove in the 80s beats with an evening of dancing, delicious treats, endless fun, and memorable snapshots. Join us on Friday, June 21st, 2024, from 2:00 PM to 4:00 PM at the Gilbert Community Center. Our Gilbert Fourth of July Celebration. Join us for the 2024 Gilbert Fourth of July Celebration, presented by Earnhardt Auto Group and Hayden Building Corp. This free, family-friendly event will take place on when? Thursday, July 4th, at Gilbert Regional Park from 4:00 PM to 9:30 PM. Experience live performances by Chad Freeman and Redline, Dirt Road, the Jason L. Dean Experience, and, and the Kenny Chesney Tribute. Plus, there will be an area, aerial entertainment including a one-of-a-kind drone show and some amazing fireworks. And that's it.
Thank you. Any other comments from council members? Great, then I will share communications from the mayor. Can I have my slide on whichever one you want to pop up, June? Whichever one comes up first. Heat Relief Network. So right now, we are part of the Maricopa Association of Government Heat Relief Efforts to raise the items that are listed on the screen, bottled water, electrolyte packets, hats, light-colored t-shirts, sunblock, and they can be donated to all of the locations shown on the screen. There's a QR code. Or visit our Town of Gilbert website and put in Heat Relief. I'm sure that it will come up for you immediately. It's very important. We had, um, we exceeded over 600 deaths in Maricopa County last year due to the heat. And I'm sure we're expecting another hot summer. It's already been hot out there, so all of the help we could get would be greatly appreciated. And we're also doing, as I mentioned, one of the first items is bottled water. And the bottled water drive right there, you can see,